...will lead us in prayer and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
We seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reward for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Thank you all for coming. We have in front of us the Yellow Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I ask that the Agenda be accepted by unanimous consent. We've also reviewed the meeting minutes dated July 23rd, 2013. Are there any amendments to the minutes? Hearing no amendments, I ask that the minutes for July 23rd be approved by unanimous consent. We've also reviewed the disbursements from July 30th, August 6th, and August 13th, 2013. Are there any questions or comments regarding disbursements on any of those three weeks? Three weeks, yes. Okay, hearing none, I ask that those three sets of disbursements be approved by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. We have with us item five on our Agenda, the presentation by the Honorable Thomas Bradshaw, member of the Executive Committee of Clean Chesapeake Coalition Member, Dorchester County Council. We also have with us the Honorable Wilbur Levin Good Jr. of Caroline County, Commissioner, and Mr. Ernie Crowfoot of Kent County Administrator and Attorney. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come forward. Well, I guess Mr. Bradshaw, is he here?
No.
No, okay. That's fine. Gentlemen, have a seat. You have the floor. Thank you for coming and welcome to Talbot County.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here and I certainly will defer to Mr. Levin Good first if he'd like to make any opening comments.
I thank you for this opportunity to present. We've been trying to do that for a little while, so I think that we've gotten some attention and that it's a valuable group to be a part of, so we hope we can convince you all to come onboard with us.
Thank you, Mr. Levin Good.
Since Mr. Bradshaw isn't here yet, I'll take the lead on the presentation. I'll confess not to having prepared any remarks, but as most of you know, that's never stopped me in the past. I don't think it'll stop me today. Mr. McLeod has some handouts for councilmembers and some, I think, left over for the public. But I just want to breeze through a couple of the historical points and then present to you some rationales for why this is an important endeavor and why we hope to have you join us. There are presently seven counties: Allegheny, Caroline, Carroll, Cecil, Dorchester, Frederick, and Kent. And despite what the popular press and some of the popular opinion was when we first started in this endeavor, the Coalition is now to kill the bay or kill programs that will benefit the bay and benefit the citizens of Maryland throughout the state. But we think that ought to be done in a fiscally prudent and scientifically prudent and have all of the meaningful participants become players in this process. And that's primarily what's given rise to this Coalition. We're all quite familiar with the Bay TMDL program and it's covered in the materials that we've given you on several of the pages. But let me say this about the TMDL program and referring back to what I just said about helping the bay. None of us deny that the bay is in trouble. Our biggest issue is the major player, and that is the Conawingo Pool and the dam at the major dam operated by Exelon at Conawingo is a significant contributor, more than half, to what's going on past that dam and affecting all of us, all of your constituents and all of our constituents. It affects the watermen. It affects, it's going to affect what farmers have to do. It's going to affect whether you can have a septic system. It's going to affect housing industry. And there's a carryover effect in all of that and all the businesses that we have in our counties and a carryover effect in our lifestyle because every player except that entity will have to cover the damage caused by that entity and will never get there because we won't stop the damage that's being caused by the dam. We recognize the importance of dams. The Conawingo and Exelon is in a power grid that serves dozens of states. And those, all of us that use that system, that participate in that grid ought to be sharing the cost of cleaning up the bay, which is not a part of the state's program at present. There are statistics and some charts in the material that will show you just what the cost currently of $14.4 billion has been allocated to or estimated to. $3.7 billion for septics, so that's about 25% of the cost to address, if you look on the chart, the bar chart, this chart, an impact that's so small you can barely see the blue line. You see that very first blue bar? Susquehanna River, sorry, the second bar, is much larger than any other of the participants and all of the other participant groups combined. This is what we're trying to bring to you. This is what we brought to the table. This is a fact that no one can ignore. And despite the early bad press from special interest groups, I won't identify any of them, about us trying to kill the bay programs, a program that doesn't address someone, something that contributes over 50% of the problem is a bad program. It's not scientifically sound, doesn't allocate costs and burden to where it should be allocated. This is, I think, that chart, this bar chart here, is the most telling of all of these charts. It makes everything that I would say repetitive, and I don't think I can say it in any starker or more alarming terms, than a major player is going unscathed in this matter. Currently, comparing, again, looking back to that earlier history, currently, as you all probably know, 18 riverkeepers have petitioned to intervene in the relicensing of the Conawingo Dam as the Coalition has. We have gone from being laughed at by bay groups and river groups as trying to stop the cleanup of the bay to have been joined by 18 riverkeepers who see the problem very similarly to how we see the problem. And that is, there's a major player that's not being asked to participate. Without that major player, we will never get, this will be a never-ending cycle of expenditures, we'll never get caught up. Look at the statistics already. How many billions have been spent on the bay? And it's no better off than it was a dozen or more years ago. And this is one of the significant contributors to there being very little improvement. I'd also like to address a sidebar. I know all of you through Mako, through legislative efforts and so on. And in the beginning, I think there was a sentiment that the Coalition's endeavors were somehow contrary to Mako's objectives. I'd like to address that for a moment. There's nothing in this program that's contrary to Mako's objectives. In fact, the Coalition operating as a Coalition is beneficial for Mako in a number of areas. First, we're bringing the litigation. The Coalition, not Mako, is bringing the litigation. So Mako doesn't have to divert the time of its people or its resources or be in the limelight of this controversial situation because the counties directly will be doing it. So why is that beneficial to Mako? Well, in addition to taking them out of the spotlight and diverting their resources, it sets up a program where if there are changes brought about by the inclusion of Exelon and the Conawingo Dam in the solution, the parameters will be, will need to be rearranged. Some of these requirements, some of these WIP programs, I know they've changed the name, but I've gotten used to calling them that, and some of the other remedial programs now, the burden allocations will need to shift. That will, at the same time, move towards protecting the bay, spread the work out among all of the players differently so that the agricultural community, the home building community, the municipalities and counties that can't afford the entire cost of this, those costs will be spread over a larger group. How they're being spread over a larger group would probably come back through legislation and regulation. And that's the Mako role to come back in then, in my view. And all of you know, I've been a Mako supporter since I walked into door in government work in 1993. And I, on occasion, had to talk different groups out of withdrawing their membership and being more active and that sort of thing. So I'm definitely a pro-Mako person, but I don't see this as an interference with Mako. I see it as an assist. We'll be the plaintiffs. We file occasional amicus briefs at Mako every now and then on a legal issue. But I can't remember a time when we actually were the plaintiffs through the Mako organization. And we're taking that burden away. And the Coalition will do that. The Coalition will have the direct contact with the licensing process and litigation if there's any subsequent litigation, which allows then the MMLs and the Mako's and the other organizations to come in at legislative time and talk about how the fix should be reallocated, redistributed, refigured. You know, the data on which the TMDL program is based, I guess it's complimentary at best to say it's just got a lot of errors in it. Right before I left Caroline County, we were told we had a coal mine in Caroline County. Wilbur, I don't recall anybody having a coal mine in Caroline County. Industrial acreage wrong. Land, the permyle surface statistics wrong. When you present that to the state, the answer is, well, it's the best that we have. Well, if it's wrong, the best that we have is costing you money, costing Kent County money, Caroline County money, everybody that has to have a WIP or a TMDL program. So in summary, I think that the cause is just, the cause is right. It's financial, it's economic development. It's the right thing to do is to get all the players at the table and make them fix what's wrong. I lived in Hartford County for nearly 20 years. I've made many visits to the Susquehanna River. The flats aren't what they used to be, despite what people might tell you. And you can just sit there at the little park area and watch the mud flow through on a regular basis. And it's just not right that we have to clean up for a company that's making billions of dollars in the electrical industry and doesn't want to carry its burden to generate that profit. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crowfoot.
Thank you.
I know Mr. Bradshaw has arrived and maybe he would like to say a few words in addition.
I didn't see you sneak up there.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and welcome to Talbot County.
It's one of the things of being self-employed, like Councilwoman Price would know, when you have your own business, you're at the beck and call of your customers.
Understood.
In the middle of farm season, and that's what keeps me going, watermelons, potatoes, corn, you know, you name it, that's what we grow in the Reeves Grove area. And this has, all of this together will have an adverse on our already strapped farmers with regulations. You know, I wrote an op-ed piece that was published in the Dorchester paper, The Banner, this past Friday, and I'll be glad to email it to you all. And yeah, it just touches on everything that has been said here today. The science that was behind this, to begin with, is flawed, and we have uncovered that. I too have made numerous trips up and along the Susquehanna and have just totally amazed at the mud, muck, debris that was floating down the river. You know, our governor wants to build his presidential program on our backs with the environmental group that are his constituents. You know, Maryland's in the lead and, you know, we've done great things. But wait a minute, what has Delaware, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and New York done to contribute this? Where are these players in all of this? The rain tax is another thing. Stormwater. I mean, you'll see in your graph here, I mean, this says it all with the loading in the bay and what actually contributes to its pollution. You'll see that in the scheme of things, stormwater, wastewater, and septics are minuscule in the grand scheme of things. This rain tax, I mean, Councilwoman Price, this is going to affect you as a businessperson. How are you going to feel when your landlord comes to you and says, "I'm going to have to increase your rent by X because now we're being assessed this rain tax." It's on the western shore, but believe me, it's going to come here too. So your landlord is going to increase your rent, so you're looking at your bottom line and saying, "Hmm, do you have employees?"
I do.
I figured you did. But I remember when you bought your business from Roger Sugar, I can't think of his last name, but when it was mailboxes, et cetera. I used to deliver the cardboard, the peanuts, and the plastic wrap and everything that was used there. And you know, then you're going to look at it and say, "Well, in order to compensate for my increased rent, I'm going to have to let one or two of these people go." So it's an economic factor, as Mr. Crowfoot has said. Our watermen, I mean, this greatly affects them too. Alan Gerard made the comment to me over lunch one day that there's no science to prove that power dredging will bring back the oysters. Well, wait a minute. In the areas around Dorchester County that allowed power dredging last year, the oysters have come back thriving. They had one of the best seasons they've had in years. As a matter of fact, there were two or three days they couldn't sell because the market was glutted. So how does that not prove what can be done through power dredging to bring the oysters back? And we shouldn't just allow one or two areas. In the northern part of the bay, you'll see in this handout as well, the Army Corps of Engineers did a study of the bottom from the tip of the bay all the way to the ocean line. And you'll see that some of the best bottom is up around Rock Hall in that area, but yet they don't want to invest in power dredging. Why? Because of all the sediment and stuff coming across the Conawingo, almost on a daily basis. If you look at the website, EyesOnTheBay.net, you can go on there, there's an icon you can click on, Satellite Photographer. You can pick a date. And if you look, and it's cloudy days, you won't see anything, but good weather days, you look at it. Look at the tip of the bay where the Susquehanna empties in, you'll see a yellowish plume almost on a daily basis. So as Mr. Crowfoot says, we need to bring Exelon into this to make them a player to say, "Hey, wait a minute. This is causing a problem. It's polluting our bay, clean it up." And we actually have figured out a way that we can do something with the sediment behind it. Delmarva Resource Conservation and Development, Dave Wilson, who's on that board, was with the Soil Conservation District up in Cecil and Kent Counties for a number of years and knows all about the gravel pits up at northeast. They can, it's a seven-mile pipe lay from the Conawingo Dam to these pits. Hydraulically dredge the sediment and spoils from there and fill these pits up that are no longer viable for mining stone and let them, let the water filter out.
Did they ever, I'm sorry, did they never think that it would eventually fill up? I mean, why, what I don't understand is why they would consider relicensing for another 50 years. I mean, I don't think there's anybody disputing the fact that it's, that it's full of sediment. I mean, that's what it's there for. Any ideas why? I mean, is it just political payoffs, things like that? I mean, why is there no...
You said it, political payoffs. That's what it boils down to. See, I'm a history buff and I study things and my wife says, "I don't know how you keep it all in your head." But if you remember correctly, when Exelon bought Constellation Energy, who owned the nuclear power plants, so Calvert Cliffs, O'Malley went and, through negotiations, as he put it, got a billion dollars, a billion with a B, dollars from Exelon to offset whatever. Some of that money was going to be put into an account to help people who were low-income families with energy assistance. So he's gotten this from them now. What's to say, you know, that wasn't sort of a, hey, well, okay, you know, you go ahead and relicense that and I'll make sure...
And the FERC themselves, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, wasn't asking the question at all about dredging it out before they relicensed them? It had to come from you all?
I don't know as if it was actually on anybody's radar screen. I mean, this is a hundred-year sediment pond, stormwater runoff. And it's full. And it really, when they designed it, I don't know as if they had, you know, the foresight to think, "Well, you know, 50 years from now, we need to do something with what's trapped behind it and clean it out." So it's been a blessing, but a curse to the bay as well.
Let me add on that question, an additional point. The data that FERC had, the EPA data, was it in direct, pretty much, contradiction with the USGS survey data, which prompted the Coalition to start looking at this issue. And of course, in a sense, we had to call it to their attention to look at other US government data that was, I would say, less biased for whatever reasons. You know, USGS folks, they just usually stick to what they measure. And that's where the better data came from. And we were able to show that. We're in the process of showing that to the FERC people. So I would tend to say that these relicensings sort of come and go as a matter of course because of the interest in the continuation of providing power and so on. And quite frankly, because you need people with a little muscle to raise an issue. And that's one of the reasons I come full circle back to we need the strength of not just eight counties, we need the strength of 24 counties if we could get them. But every county that joins us and helps contribute to the cost also helps contribute to the synergy of the number when we go back to the federal agencies and the state agencies and say, "Hey, it's not just some crazy guy from Kent County. All these folks can't be wrong."
Your bar chart, where did this information come from? Is there anybody that disputes the percentage and how it's distributed amongst the Susquehanna and the septics and the stormwater?
If you wouldn't mind, come forward to the microphone so that the viewers at home can listen in would be great.
Sure. My name is Chip McLeod. Our firm has been providing support for the Clean Chesapeake Coalition. I will say that all the data provided in this handout is all, can be footnoted in reference to some publicly available data that's out there. So to this point, nobody has questioned the data that we've been presenting. All the research that we've been doing for the Coalition counties, we haven't been able to afford our own scientists, so it's been reviewing and analyzing all the publicly available data, really frankly, sent back from Hurricane Agnes forward about what's going on in the Chesapeake Bay. And if I may, add one comment to what Councilwoman Price was asking about the FERC process. The relicensing is underway. It is ongoing. It actually started several years ago with some scoping and very quiet talks that nobody was really paying attention to. What's troubling today, and the Coalition has intervened, I mean, there is a motion to intervene filed by the Coalition. We'd be happy to provide a copy to the county. And but there are also, what's troubling, our non-public settlement negotiations have been underway since last July between a number of agencies, NGOs, and Exelon. We have asked, and now again, we being Maryland County governments, Maryland elected officials, asking, "Who's in these settlement talks? What's going on? Why can't seven Maryland County governments who are committed to spending a lot of money below the dam in the name of saving the bay, we can't participate? We won't..." FERC just says, "Oh, you have to talk to Exelon." Now, when you look at this issue of what's happening at the Conawingo, it's hard to say or deny this isn't the most significant threat to the bay right now, given how full that reservoir is. I mean, just to give you a little context, when that reservoir and that dam was first built, the depth of the reservoir above the dam, the pool, was about 120 feet. It's now estimated at 15 to 20 feet. And it's a 14-mile-long reservoir. I mean, that is how much has accumulated. And what's really happened is that's damaging the bay in an exponential, in an exponential way, is storm events and the scour. I mean, this picture, we always give out whenever we talk. It really speaks for itself. That photograph was taken a few days after Tropical Storm Lee. That's a 100-mile sediment plume down to the mouth of the Potomac River over a nine-day period. And if you look at the backside and you look at the amount of pollution that was loaded into the Chesapeake Bay from that single storm event. And let me just point one out. It's right on the back of this chart. In this, from that, from this picture, let's just take nitrogen. 42,000 tons of nitrogen were loaded into the bay. Now, these are not our numbers. These come from U.S. Geological Survey, independent scientists. 42,000 tons of nitrogen in a one-storm event. Look down further, under the state's WIP, septics, taxpayers are going to spend $3.7 billion regulating septics to keep 620 tons a year of nitrogen out of the bay. And yet, in a single storm event, 42,000 tons. And on an annual basis, 71,000 tons of nitrogen come down to Susquehanna annually. Now, I know these numbers sort of start getting like, whoa, whoa, whoa. But when you start looking at the activities and programs that the state of Maryland is mandating on local governments to do in the name of saving the bay, and you look at the cost and what supposedly we're going to be accomplishing, it's just so glaring what's missing. And it's what's happening up at the Conawingo. The state of Maryland, just so you know, the state of Maryland has a very significant lever in this relicensing, and it's a water quality certification. The state of Maryland has to issue a water quality certification for the relicensing. What's troubling is, the state of Maryland is supposedly part of these settlement talks with Exelon. And they hold the most important lever. And nobody in the public, Maryland County governments, cannot find out what's going on in those talks.
So is your aim of the Coalition is to have Exelon dredge the pool or just to share data? Or what's the end game to the Coalition?
The end game would be have something done at the reservoir behind the dam to get rid of the sediment so that it can actually work as it was intended, a stormwater pond that has trapping capacity. And once you do that, you'll see, the domino effect of it will be, you won't have all that sediment and scour coming over the dam almost on a daily basis. And you, the oysters and the submerged aquatic vegetation will be able to come back because that sediment is not floating up and down the bay.
Does that require dredging of that pond?
Yes.
To regain, to regain some significant trapping capacity would be the biggest help to restoring the Chesapeake Bay and protecting the investments we're all making below the dams. And the thing, you know, Mr. Crowfoot was talking a lot about Exelon. I mean, one thing to be clear, there is not an expectation that Exelon alone bears this burden. But here's the fascinating fact that today, here we're talking about this issue, nobody is responsible for doing anything about what's in that pond. Nobody's on the hook. Pennsylvania wasn't being told in their TMDL to do anything. It's not Maryland's responsibility. And Exelon has no legal requirement to do anything. The only process right now in play is this relicensing. Pennsylvania, and you got to look at the big picture. One thing about this photo is also to get people to start stepping back. And, you know, we've gotten so down in the weeds of how we're supposed to help the bay. You know, we talked about rain barrels and pet waste. If you step back a minute and look at the big picture, what's happening north of that dam is really crushing us in Maryland. And it's fair to say that Pennsylvania is far behind progress in doing things in the name of saving the bay than what we're doing below. And we have to keep bringing that up because we're spending a lot of money. I mean, Maryland has been serious in trying to help the bay. We've spent real money. And when do we start saying, "Wait a minute, why isn't Pennsylvania being, doing a lot more?" And so the strategy, and we'll say it's very public, we got to get a hook into Exelon. So then, Exelon... So then, Exelon can go talk to Pennsylvania and up in Congress and say, hey, we need a real regional solution here. We've got to do something. I mean, Pennsylvania, to me, if you wanted to write a new TMDL, if EPA was sitting there, I'd say the TMDL for Pennsylvania should be dredge that reservoir.
Does anyone know?
That would be more for the bay than anything else.
How much dredge, how much sediment material was in that pond?
There's about four-hundred thousand dump truck loads or so, if they took it all out.
Yeah, there's a lot. I mean, we have the numbers, I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know, you can't, you wouldn't expect to do it all, but if you could regain ten, fifteen years of trapping capacity, it would literally give the bay some breathing room, give a chance to give oysters a fighting chance in the upper bay, give Pennsylvania a chance to, through their regulatory process, start putting in programs to stop the runoff. I mean, it's true, if Pennsylvania could stop all the runoff going into the Susquehanna, this wouldn't be a problem. But we all know how hard it is to do that in Maryland, regulate and stop runoff. For us to expect Pennsylvania to do that quickly?
Let me make one other observation with respect to the dredging, too. I haven't run the numbers, but it seems to me that spreading the cost of that dredging over everyone that draws power from that grid to which we contribute, in other words, the users of the electric, would be a very marginal, very marginal cost on a monthly bill. There are millions and millions of people and companies, and that grid buys and sells power like, like we all go to the supermarket, you know, get some chips. And it's, to say that would be that nat on an elephant probably would over-describe the size of the bother.
But you don't write, know for sure, the cost of doing that right now?
I've heard estimates, eighty-five dollars a truckload.
Eighty-five dollars?
Eighty-five dollars a truckload.
Per truckload.
But when you multiply all that out, when you, when, this is when, reminds me of the time when the old BG&E was found kind of guilty or liable for having rounded up the wrong way. But when they multiplied the page per bill over the number of customers and the number of bills and over the number of years, it was a sizable refund. Well, it works that way in reverse, too. It's a marginal cost. Exelon is not going to go under if they, whether or not they're working with upstream states by having to clear this up. The consumer base is so broad that it's a marginal cost, in my view. But if it isn't done, the cost will be more than marginal south and east of the Conawingo Pool.
I've got a question about our local rivers and tributaries. This is a huge factor, over half, to the Chesapeake Bay. But we have, obviously, just Topo County, we have six-hundred miles of shoreline, and we have rivers that feed into the bay, which I think is the reason why we have to do the TMDLs and whips. But yet, we want our own rivers to be cleaner because our watermen are fishing in there and, you know, looking for oysters and good old Maryland crabs. So, we expect that there would still be a cost to the counties that have our own rivers to take care of that, because this Susquehanna and the Conawingo Dam probably doesn't affect our individual rivers very much.
Well, let me say this. Eighteen river keepers probably see an effect, a lot of these rivers are tidal, so some of the stuff that comes down gets taken up. They've obviously seen a benefit, and we don't expect that the end result would be to do away with TMDL programs that affect, or any programs that affect the health of the bay. But some surely might be redesigned or reconfigured, and the problems, and the science underlying the problems is better described. You can ask some MDE people how a septic problem, three miles away from water, affects the bay, and it's guesswork. They can't tell you. So, the more scientific the analysis is, the better off the programs will be. And that's one of the ends we'd like to see come from all of this.
Well, I think maybe one of, we hear a lot in the water quality reports that we get, that the farther you go upstream, the worse the quality of the water gets, not the better. If you look at the Susquehanna and you look at this picture, which makes the assumption that all of that plume in the bay is coming from across that dam, which in a storm event, there's obviously sediment coming from all over the place. On a storm that rolls across three or four states, you're going to have sediment coming into the bay through a lot of different channels. I don't know that you can point to that picture and say that that sediment plume that's shown there after that storm event originated from all the water coming across that dam. Now, maybe if you can make that argument, fine. But the point is that as you go up the rivers here, the water quality decreases, not increases. And so, it's counterintuitive to say that the Conawingo Dam is the source of our river water quality issues, when it would be the reverse.
No, I'm not saying that. Just keep a couple of thoughts to keep in mind. Clearly, there are local pollution issues and the effort, the attention that's been brought and educated all of us about how important local efforts are. But we've all been brought up to understand the bay is an estuary, that this is tidal, and what comes out goes up. If you took, if you look at the picture of the bay a few days after that, which is showing that plume pushing down, a lot of it comes back up. Now, not all the way back up into the headwaters, but there's another thing you hear from the watermen, you know, what good are a lot of clean creeks and tributaries going to a dead bay? I mean, the upper Chesapeake Bay is almost dead. And we can spend a lot of money saving creeks and tributaries, but we're losing sight, again, of the big picture. And, look, the fish and all that have to get through that bay to get up into the creeks and the tributaries. So, it is all interconnected in different ways. Not to discount the local efforts, this was never brought up as an either-or, but it is about prioritizing. I mean, there is only so much public resources to devote in the name of saving the bay. The issue is, are we focused on the most cost-effective and efforts that'll produce results? I mean, we've been doing a lot of things for a lot of years, and the water quality of the bay is not much better. Councilman Pax, to your question about cost of dredging, when you look at all these activities from a pure, like, cost per pound, what are we spending to remove a certain amount of pollution? And I'll send you this information, dredging the reservoir is a penny a pound when you compare other activities to keep sediment and nutrients out of the bay. A penny a pound to get up there and dredge that reservoir compared to a lot of other activities.
And you're not saying to do away with those other activities?
No.
You're saying add this one to the list of others that you have, that we have out there right now?
But, so, yes. So, following that line of thought, our state of Maryland is busy telling us all the things we should be doing in the name of meeting TMDL and saving the bay, and they're not mentioning this problem.
Okay.
And they're not devoting any resources. And yet, we're all, you all are being asked to devote a lot to do all these other things.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod.
Thank you.
You all set? Mr. Duncan, any questions?
Yes, a couple. One, Ernie, I looked at your charts, and I have a little problem with references to statistical data that you have in reference made. You read it someplace, or somebody told you this? There's nothing documented, that fifty percent of the pollution comes from the Conawingo Dam.
We can provide you.
Where does it come from?
A lot of this came from USGS survey, a lot of it came from other scientific reports. If you'd like, we can document. None of this got pulled out of the air. The staff can document every statistic we have.
I can give you that presentation with every fact footnoted, to some source.
Obviously, there's quite a disparity with some reports.
No.
To the contrary, to what you're saying, fifty percent, saying nitrogen has a large portion of pollution in the bay, but pull all of it aside. I, another question I have is, what is your purpose of pursuit? What are you trying to accomplish?
Yeah, yeah. We need to be in the process.
Process of what?
The relicensing process. We need to have a voice, sort of in making the sausage, not tasting it after it comes out the end of the machine. Right now, as Chip referenced, there are numerous nongovernmental entities, state of Maryland agencies and other agencies, that are negotiating with Exelon, with FERC's blessing, and they won't even tell us who they are. These are people out there deciding your fate, and we can't find out even who they are. So, the motion to intervene is to make us a player, not an observer. It's no sense getting our two cents worth in after the deal is over and telling us, telling everybody after the license is reissued and the deal is cut, that, did you consider that, or did you consider that? No, but it's too late now.
We're not in a court of law, Mr. Duncan. The filing that Ernie mentioned is, we have filed a motion to intervene at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to participate in the relicensing. And if that relicensing, at the end of the process, results in conditions on Exelon that the coalition counties don't think is going to help the Chesapeake Bay, then maybe you appeal that relicense. But we are still at the relicensing, and that's the forum we're in. We're at a federal regulatory agency, we're not in a court.
The next question I have perhaps is, if we just alluded to all these restrictions, TMDLs that the counties are obligated to meet and so forth, down the line, why would one, if your statistical data is correct, why would the governor or the legislature or anybody else overlook the largest contributor to pollution to the bay? It just doesn't make sense that they're going to pay attention to the little guys down here, and all of a sudden, the big guy up here, they're not going to pay attention to? They too know that that dam has got problems. Senator Pipp can make sure of that, there's no question about that.
I'll give you two answers, two parts of the answer, the way I see it. And I'm not going to, unless they want to, put any elected officials, you know, on the chopping block with this answer. But I can, in my heart of hearts, and I, you know, I've been at this game a long time, there are political and contribution considerations in how much you want to irritate someone, some entity, that it and its employees make significant contributions to the, to political groups and political persons in this state and in other states. Chip's already mentioned one instance of it, or, I'm sorry, Tom, I think, mentioned that. I know in my heart of hearts of a group of elected officials that they're afraid to irritate Exelon. I suspect, quite frankly, that FERC is afraid to irritate Exelon, because money talks. And as I said earlier, they ain't poor.
No.
But they don't want you to have a say in what affects you, 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 you. They want the local people locked out because the president of Exelon and somebody from MDE can stand up and say all they want, and I'll bet you Wilbur, Ron, Vithian, and Tom and I could pull out twenty watermen, and you could too, that would tell you it ain't so.
I have said this all along.
The little guy, the rich get richer, the little guy's carry free.
I am the last generation in my family that will have worked on the water. My sons won't get to know that, as I did. This is one of the reasons why I joined this, and Dorchester did too, because it's gotten to the point that the farmers and the watermen are bearing the brunt of all of this. It's political. The politics need to be taken out of it. We all want clean water, but as Ernie just alluded to, the experts, i.e. the farmers and the watermen, weren't the ones consulted on this and asked for their input. They know it better than we do, because they live it and work it every day. We're at a precipice right here of being able to make a major contribution to bay health and bring clean water. It's now or never. Years down the line, when you look at this and you didn't take the chance, how are you going to answer your farmer and waterman constituents that will no longer be able to work because of all the regulations that's going to come out of this? What's your answer going to be?
When will the license, the period of renewal for the license for Exelon, when is that to take place?
Their license expires September of 2014. September of this year is supposed to kick off a one-year period of an environmental impact study. So, we're sort of waiting to see what FERC does in about a month or so, and there'll be a year process that should be pretty intense. There's an expectation that there'll be moves to delay the relicensing. We've already seen correspondence from the state of Maryland to this effect. It's interesting, EPA just filed a letter with FERC yesterday that is quite telling, and I'll be happy to share that with you all as well. But you can sort of start reading what's happening about a coalescing of other forces to sort of delay and control this relicensing. So, but that's the timeframe.
And is there a public hearing process during that year?
From what we understand about the relicensing, it's not even, there's no event, like a hearing in a room, it's all done by paper. Intervening parties will, and, you know, when I share with you the motion that we filed on behalf of the counties, I think you'll find it very substantive. We don't think anybody's put together the factual story about what's happening at the Conawingo as we have. But to our knowledge, it's all done by pleadings, and FERC, as a regulatory body, will have to do their job. But as Mr. Crowfoot alluded to, our challenge collectively is to get a regulatory agency whose mission is power, to think like an environmental regulatory agency. And FERC's priority is not environment, it is power. And we have a real uphill battle, because we don't have the state of Maryland speaking publicly about this like these counties are, saying this is the most important time, critical time for the bay. And so, we have to really fight this issue and make sure FERC does a good job looking at the environmental impacts.
Let me add one more item that doesn't, don't you find a peculiar, Mr. Pax's question about the process and is there a public hearing? And that part comes later on, just like the FCC does, a lot of other agencies do, with a call for comments and a call for, don't you find it kind of odd that they're already having settlement negotiations? They even call them settlement negotiations with certain federal and state agencies and other players? Why would you have a settlement negotiation before you had a public hearing over the problem? If that doesn't sound like this is getting closer and closer to being a done deal, and we're not at the table, I can't think of a better example, all the more reason to get a lot of push behind the intervention group and the coalition to get us a seat in there. This is not a transparent process.
Food for thought as you go to the Mako Conference, because at the Mako Conference, you're going to start hearing a lot about the next regulatory shoe to drop in the name of the bay TMDL, and that's accounting for growth, nutrient trading. Here's some food for thought. Don't get caught up in nutrient trading between Farmer Brown and this person next door. Think of nutrient trading in the big picture. If Exelon would step up to the plate and get us trapping capacity back in that reservoir, give them a nutrient credit to go do whatever energy project they have around the country. Save our Chesapeake Bay and tell EPA to give them the mother of all nutrient credits to go do whatever they want elsewhere. But no, we're going to be talking all about, should we do nutrient trading in a town, within a county? Does it have to be regional? They're going to get us all bogged down in swapping and spending money, and we're going to lose sight of the big picture. And the nutrient credit trading we should be talking about is, what can we incentivize Exelon to do, and then let them go build a nuclear power plant out west with it, to help our Chesapeake Bay?
Well, I think that there's two facts that are probably indisputable. One is that that sediment pond is getting really filled up, whether it's eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent, and at some point, it's going to be full. So, regardless, it needs to be dredged. I mean, I don't think anybody, regardless of what you do with the TMDLs and the whips, it is the people's responsibility who are contributing to that nutrient load to dredge the thing. And, now I've lost the second. Well, the second thought is, whether it's fifty-five percent or twenty-five percent, it is contributing. Well, the second thought is whether it's 55% or 25%, it is contributing to the demise of the Chesapeake Bay. Whether you want to say that this chart is 100% accurate, it does have a contributing factor. And right now, they're contributing zero to helping the State of Maryland clean it up, and they should be contributing something. And maybe it's up for argument how much the percentage is. But I don't, I think it's pretty indisputable that there is some bad things coming over the dam.
Councilman Bartlett, you spoke about the further up the rivers you go, the dirtier they are. This man here can speak to that.
I can tell you that I have farmed since I was, I've been involved in agriculture since I was a small boy. And the changes that we've put through from the 60s to today are night and day difference, not only with how we till the soil, how we introduce crop to the soil, but also in animal It was nothing uncommon for cattle to go through streams, water in ponds, and they contributed to it. That's not happening anymore. Animal agriculture's been moved away from the water. If we put, we have to control our sediment and our runoff. And in those plans, we're required to maintain sediment ponds now. So if you do ditching or you build a building and you've got a sediment pond, there's a certain point where that sediment control reaches that you have to dredge it back out so it continues to do its same basis as what's happening up there on the dam. Only that's been allowed to happen for 100 years. They've done nothing with it. But they didn't know that when they built it. We're smarter. We've learned things. We need to address it. That's the whole key here. We keep learning. I give a good push for our waterkeepers locally. I've been involved with the trib team, our local waterkeepers, they're involved with agriculture here. They go out and they work with people. They try to put plans in the, in the ground that will help improve water quality coming off the farms. They're standing up doing that. So I'll give them a plus here because it's one of the things that everybody pushes them back because they got a bad rep down south. So our local boys and the Chop Tang, the Chester, they're all participating in making things better. And that's a plus. We got to work together. That's why we're here today.
Thank you.
We need to come together.
But to go back to your comment about the further up river you go, the dirtier it is, follow the watershed at the Chop Tang. Where did it end up? 23 miles of it in Delaware behind Harrington, Felton, Sandtown area? What is Delaware doing to help?
Yeah, I just think that when I look at our creeks with, with the small tributaries that we have and the reports that we get from the riverkeepers and the water quality reports, it's counterintuitive to your assertion that the pollution is coming mainly from the Conawingo Dam or half of it's coming from the Conawingo Dam. Doesn't make sense in terms of the water quality. If that were true, then the water quality would decrease the farther towards the Conawingo Dam you go, and that's not necessarily the case.
But the Chop Tang especially, you know, using it as an example, after Tropical Storm Lee, several days later, after all of that mess came down, the tide had sucked a lot of that stuff up in as far as Secretary, if not further. So to say that it doesn't have some sort of contribution...
That's making the assumption that the sediment shown in that photo, all of it rolled across the Conawingo Dam, and I don't know that you can prove that. Yes, there was lots of sediment in the bay after a tropical storm, but that doesn't mean it all came across the Conawingo Dam.
But I would just point out that the USGS survey says that that storm event from the Conawingo and Sesquahanna unloaded 19 million tons of sediment in the bay, 4 million of which was scoured from what's sitting there accumulated. And when you take 4 million tons of sediment in nine days and throw it into the Chesapeake Bay, it's devastating.
I don't disagree that there is a certain amount of sediment coming over that dam and probably a lot. The question is, is it shown in this photo? Or is that sediment that came from every other river that flows into the bay at the same time? So that's my point. And it's counterintuitive to the science that tells us that the farther you go up the tributaries, the worse the water quality gets.
Do you think 100% is just coming from our tributaries, our local rivers?
No, no, I'm saying that, that this photo is a, could be a deceptive photo because you can't prove that the sediment that's in the bay came across that dam. Now, maybe there's some way to measure the amount of sediment going through the dam and then you can make that calculation that X number of tons went across that dam.
Well, those figures are on the back of that picture.
Well, that, to me, is more of a scientific assessment. That doesn't necessarily say that that sediment that's shown in that picture is what came across the dam. Obviously, some of it did.
Well, here's one other way to just kind of look at this issue. Undisputable is that 50% of the fresh water to the Chesapeake Bay comes from the Sesquahanna River.
Okay.
Ergo, half the pollution. Now, if you really study this issue, more than half the pollution to the bay is coming down the Sesquahanna. But just on the fact that 50% of the fresh water, that's where 50% of the pollution is coming down, because as you point out, it's these creeks and tributaries that have pollution. So undisputed, where half the fresh water to the bay is coming from, and that's the Sesquahanna, and we have a state whip that doesn't even address it.
Okay.
I think you're, let's move on. I think your last statement that may probably is more meaningful to me is that we have a player in the watershed that's not taking part in the cleanup of the watershed and that being the Conawingo Dam. On that point alone, I can see your point. I'm not going to get into whether they're contributing 50% or 25% or 10%.
Sure.
They're not doing anything to help clean it up. And on that point, I think you raised a very poignant statement that they should be involved in the cleanup. And we, as counties, should be involved in those processes as far as public hearings and sediment hearings and so forth and so forth, which are not at this time. So, well, not alone, that's food for thought. If we have this sediment pond that is reaching its limit as far as a settlement, what should be done about it as far as dredging? How should it be done? Who should pay for it? Whether it be paid by the ratepayers or whether it be paid by Exelon itself? I agree with you, Ernie. They are a billion-dollar company and they could easily afford to do it. But those are discussions that need to take place. And if nothing else, I think that's something that we need to try to focus on. We have a number of streams of river. You have the Chester, you have the Batuxin River, you have Gunpowder. We have a number of rivers coming into, into the Chesapeake Bay. Who's to say that all of this is from the dam? I think Mr. Bartlett's point is a point one. We don't know. But we do know that they need to be doing something to help clean it up.
Well, gentlemen, I think we're going to move on, but we certainly appreciate you coming and your persistence and coming in front of us, and we will certainly be back in touch with you at some point in the near future. We appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all more.
Yeah.
We have with us an update from the Maryland Environmental Service, Mr. Steve Tomcheski, Program Director of Environmental Operations, Maryland Environmental Service. Welcome, Mr. Tomcheski, and thank you for being here with us today.
That's a tough act to follow.
I was going to say.
Mrs. Price stepped out for a glass of water. She'll be right back. But please, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always a pleasure being in Talbot County. I'll give you a brief rundown. This is focused on April through June of 2013, the last quarter we just finished. In Midshore One, here in Easton, we transferred approximately 8,000 tons, 8,100 tons for the year that gave us about 34,398 tons, which is about where we've been running on an annual basis out of Midshore One going to Midshore Two. 8,852 homeowner drop-off customers, yard waste received, 685 tons. And essentially, everything has remained pretty much constant. No real changes have occurred. As far as the Midshore One landfill, the interim status of closure continues. We have made some progress proceeding with the final capping of the landfill. We have looked at a number of different options, and the one option that we have, we are proceeding with is the design of an exposed geomembrane cap for Midshore One. And we have received tentative approval from MDE on that issue. Let me give you some of the reasons why we've decided to go with the exposed geomembrane cap. First, is that was actually suggested by MDE. We had initial conversations with MDE, and compared to a traditional cap, this is a lot, has a lot of advantages, including it would allow for the potential future use of that remaining capacity at Midshore One that we've talked about or discussed in the past. It does exist there. It would also reduce the cost of maintaining the site afterward. There'd be no cost of mowing. You can imagine, the landfill is about 70 some or so acres. That's a lot of grass to cut in and of itself. It would also reduce the amount of soil erosion problems, slope failures. The water running off, the stormwater running off in the landfill would be much cleaner. It'd also give us better leachate control and also gives you the option of installing a solar collection system over top of that exposed geomembrane. To compare the two types of caps, the traditional cap involves bringing in a lot of dirt cover. Right now, the whole landfill has two feet of dirt on top everywhere. With the exposed geomembrane, essentially, you put this geomembrane fabric over top after you do the final grading to make sure you have the stormwater runoff correctly set up. And you need to anchor that. Anchoring's a big issue. There's a lot of effort spent on anchoring. And there's upgraded stormwater controls that are installed because of the amount of rain, you're going to get running off of a geomembrane surface versus a dirt surface, which will probably involve additional stormwater ponds will have to be installed. The traditional cap, you have to bring in a tremendous amount of cover dirt over top of a different type of membrane, but a similar type membrane. And unfortunately, in today's world, cost is an issue. The exposed geomembrane, we were estimating at about $4 to $5 million for the installation costs, and that's just an estimate. But it's roughly about 50% of the cost for a traditional cap, which doesn't have a lot of the benefits I listed earlier. So currently, we're working with Maryland Department of Environment on that issue, and we are planning to start work on that project in the spring of next calendar year, so April, May of next calendar year. And one of the reasons for that, among others, is that given the interim status that we're in right now, once you install a cap, you have to monitor for 30 years. Well, that clock hasn't started yet, even though we haven't been landfilling for two years, and the cost of us maintaining interim status is a lot higher than when the final cap went. So we want to get a cap as soon as we can and move forward. So, anyway, that's pretty much an overview of Midshore One. Moving on to Midshore Two.
Steve, do you mind a question?
Yeah, sure. I'll take any questions you want.
I'm just trying to get a sense, when the landfill was proposed, which was some time ago, there were certainly many hearings held with the surrounding property owners, things of that sort. And part of the discussion at that time was, at least state-of-the-art, I guess, back then, closure procedures that would be implemented. So have we gone to the trouble yet of having these conversations? I'm particularly sensitive to the surrounding property owners and what they feel they anticipated at closing would occur. This is a substantial change from that. It may be one that's fully justified, but I don't know how many conversations you've had yet or had that opportunity with the property owners.
Well, it's our intention, once we get a final agreement with MDE, to have meetings with the community groups. We have done that in the past. I don't know if it's going to be that big, but there's, I think it actually has benefits more than downside. But, you know, communication is a big part of our job and education, and that would certainly be part of our plans moving forward.
I would hope that it occurs sooner as opposed to later, and I agree, you all are very effective at communicating. There've been some issues out there that you all have resolved, and I just think that the surrounding property owners are going to be very focused on what happens out there.
And I don't blame them one bit. I'd be just as concerned if I was living nearby.
Right. I just think the conversation being had before MDE signs off or approvals are all wrapped up need probably will be more productive than after the fact.
I couldn't agree more. We will proceed as soon as possible. I agree, that's a very good point, Mr. Hollis.
Mr. Tomcheski, in the, in what was expected to happen out there originally? You would bring in a bunch of dirt, cap it off, grass would grow, and then the landfill would just sort of sit there? I assume, do trees grow?
No.
On top of a landfill? You don't want trees growing?
No, you don't want trees growing on top. They would impact the membrane cap that we've on a traditional landfill, so you have to keep it mowed. You don't want any trees for the foreseeable future.
Right.
At least 30 years.
And now with a, with a membrane cap, this is some sort of waterproof tarp kind of thing that's nailed over top of the, nailed into the ground or secured somehow?
It's anchored substantially. Yes, sir.
That basically sheds the water off the top of the mound, and then you collect that water in stormwater ponds around the edges?
In essence, that's actually correct. Yeah. You would have, the landfill gas flares will still be in service. This would be around that. And in a traditional landfill cap, you would have, the flares will also be in service, obviously.
Because you got to let the gas come out of the thing. You can't just cover it in a giant tarp, I assume, or you have a pressure cooker happening.
Is there anything on top of the rubber?
Is anything on top, well, it's not rubber, but no, it would be, that'd be the exposed surface.
And what's the lifetime longevity of that?
The manufacturer we've talked to have said at least 25 to 30 years, which...
And what happens after that? It just...
You may have to replace that cap. It may have to be replaced, or you can make a decision to reuse it. If you look in the future, you know, Midshore Two will be, well, currently under agreements, it'll be, we'd have to finish up there in 2030, I believe. At that point, we can make a decision. Who knows what kind of decision would be there? But, you know, one of the reasons we have, you know, the less we spend now allows us for future, to make any change in the future because we have that money sitting in an account. And the future, you know, needs for a landfill or capacity are up in the air, and we're not sure where that goes. So it gives us a lot of flexibility, I think.
But if it's just dirt and grass, you mow it, and those are your costs going forward, and at some point, the county would assume the maintenance of the landfill after a certain point in time? Or do you own it forever?
I think we own it forever.
Okay.
I plan on being here.
So you, you would maintain it?
Personally, perhaps, yeah.
Let me have one question.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's under agreements. I would bow to the attorneys to correct me, but I believe that's true.
The cost of this exposed membrane is 50% less than traditional capping?
Yes, sir.
Is that what I heard you say?
Yes. And primarily, if you think about it, and greenhouse gas issue too, we're talking about moving in hundreds of thousands of yards of material as cover. So, you know, I can't say how many truckloads of material this avoids having to bring into that site.
Can we take some of the sediment from the Conawingo Dam and put it on top of the 坝?
I was going to suggest, one of the things, MES does dredging, as you know, we probably know we do the Papa Island and up in the city, we do Hart Miller Island, so we could provide that service. That's not my division.
You say you're negotiating with MDE now?
I'd say we're not really negotiating, we're discussing it with MDE, yes, sir. We have gotten a tentative approval from them, from them to proceed.
Has this been done before?
Yes.
Where?
In Delaware. Delaware Solid Waste Authority has a landfill in, I think it's Cherry Island, I believe it's called, and they've had 25 years of experience over there. And we visited that site. That was one of the reasons, you know, we're very concerned about it. And actually, MDE, that's, MDE went there previous to our conversations with them, and that's where their recommendation came, that we should take a look at that as an option. It's, you know, I guess I could portray it as an innovative option because it is innovative as far as the traditional cap. So, you know, that's the reason why we took a hard look at it.
Good. Do you want to continue on with Midshore Two?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Midshore Two continues to operate pretty much on plan. We took in 100 and, roughly 101,000 tons last year, which was very close to what we had guessed on our budget. We get a lot more brush from Talbot County for whatever reason than we do at their Midshore Two landfill, 319 tons. The amount of leachate that was generated out of the landfill at Midshore Two was significantly less than what we have seen in the past. Of course, we haven't gotten to September. Last September, we had a lot of rain, so that could impact our leachate going forward for the rest of the calendar year. We're still using Cell Four. We have begun the design, construction design and permitting for Cell Two. Actually, that's fairly, fair along, we are well along. We're planning to go to construction on that currently in the same timeframe in the spring. So we're planning a lot of activity for the spring of... So we're planning a lot of activity for the spring of calendar year fourteen. So that's, and that's required, and we'll stay ahead of the fill. The first cell, Cell Four, will last the shortest period of all the cells because in order to get the right elevations and all that, you can't, when we have Cell Two built, which is adjacent to Cell Four, we'll be able to bridge over that and fill that gap. And until we have another cell, we can't really maximize the use of Cell Four. So that's pretty much on plan. In the recycling area, we have continued to make our transition going to the eight-yard cans, you've probably seen around. And we're going to be buying eight, twenty more of those eight-yard cans to place at some sites that still have the igloos. One of the challenges we have is that the igloo trucks that we have, we have two, and they're both ten years old, and they're pretty well past their useful service life. Right now, we're just using them to pick up the glass, the glass separation, the igloos. I have no, we're still waiting on, you know, Tillman Island is noted in our IGA on recycling that, you know, we will, we will work with you to set up a site there whenever...
Will you not have a county to respond to you about the site?
If that's okay to ask, to say that, yes, I will say that. Yeah, I mean, we're looking for, as long as you tell us where to put it, we will put it there, I promise you that. It's way that simple.
We need to be getting back to you on that. I know Mr. Hollis had raised that point several months ago as far as that site, so...
Mr. Clark, may I speak? We're currently talking to the school board about permission to...
Okay.
We actually have two options. One option right now, and I've been talking, I guess, with Mrs. Kelly Cox with the Phelps Environmental War, or S Environmental Center. They currently did not own the property, but they have been interested in us locating the recycled containers there on that property. But my understanding, they will not close on that until probably sometime in September, October. I was also looking at possibly, and I've been in contact with, I guess, Mrs. Griffith, and then basically she advised me to talk to Bob Horvath with the Board of Public Schools, and I've not really finaled up anything with Bob Horvath about setting up something possibly tentatively at the Tillman Island Elementary School and moving it to Phelps Wharf if we could set it up there, so...
Now, I understand you in particular, your departmental hall are overworked and understaffed. We talked about this the first year that we were elected, and it was adopted into the plan, so it's really time to nail down that location and give the residents of the Bay Hundred area, Tillman Island, a place to dump their recyclables.
And one of the things I think, it'd be nice for us if we could just set it up at one site rather than move it at a later date. So, you know, the key was right now, just waiting to find out if the Phillips Environmental Wharf has settled on the property, and if that's taken place, we would move forward with that.
I would, I would say that would be preferable to putting it at the school, just knowing what those things tend to look like with children running around. I just would be wary of broken glass and young children at the school because that does happen periodically, and I don't know that you could separate it effectively.
And I have no problem calling Mrs. Cox, you know, this week and seeing if things are moving forward.
Or some other place. I mean, I'm not just saying those are the only...
Just find a place.
Yeah, I think it's important for public works to make their recommendation about the relocation back to us. There are pros and cons to both. We need to get moving on it.
Thank you.
Well, I have you both over, Mr. President. The last quarterly report, I think we were running a little low on the tonnage amount coming to Midshore Two, if I remember correctly. The numbers that you're reporting now, almost a hundred and one thousand tons for 2013 and six, and you've hit your projected number for '13?
Yes, but that is a downsized number. We would prefer it to be about a hundred and twenty thousand tons, which is, which is what we saw in the peak until we had, we lost some tons, went up to a transfer station that was built in Delaware. So that, that continues unchanged. So, you know, we reduced our budget accordingly.
So are we, are we out of the woods? Are we, is this a hundred and twenty, I mean, I'm sorry, it's a hundred and one? Is this going to be our new number, or how do we stand?
It's our budget for this year that we're in because that's what we anticipate coming in unless, the only way that I see that changing right now is if we expand our service area to go beyond the four counties. You know, you could make a thousand and one scenarios on that, but right now, that looks like that's the number.
Were the hundred and one bringing the dollars that you need as far as operation?
Yeah, I think, just as a reminder by the council, I mean, as of July first, the tipping fee was increased on, at the Midshore Two. So it went from fifty-eight dollars per ton to sixty dollars per ton. So currently, at the waste transfer station in Talbot County, we charge sixty-seven dollars per ton. So, and that was the other thing, that they were raising it two dollars per ton to help offset that lost tonnage that MES was talking about.
I have a different question about recycling and volume. When you were on Midshore One, is, since Easton has now had the recycling for a full year, has there, have they seen much of a difference in, or do you know if the volume of just waste is significantly less because of the recycling program?
Yeah, that's a very good question because that was something that we were, I don't want to say concerned, but, you know, we were curious looking at. And actually, if I looked at the numbers, I really wouldn't see a huge difference. It didn't, it didn't have a huge impact. The amount we're collecting from the MRP, the Midshore Recycling Sites, hasn't changed dramatically. We've probably lost some tons that have been recycled coming from Easton.
Do you think everybody's participating?
I have no way to, I have not...
I mean, it's supposed to be mandatory. I know I put my, unfortunately, the can only gets collected once every two weeks, so when it's full, you know, I'm sure things get thrown away.
Right, right.
There's no real measurable way?
I don't know. We haven't seen any statistics, and I haven't looked at just the town of Easton, what they've delivered for disposal. To be honest, that's something I forgot about. I really meant to take a hard look at that, and, you know, there may be a dramatic reduction, and I just haven't seen it because of other things.
Well, we thought originally that maybe they wouldn't have to charge for recycling because the waste that they're delivering and paying for at the landfill would be less expensive to offset.
Oh, the offset.
And as a matter of fact, the rate is going up for recycling, so I was just really curious, based on that, what the volumes are, how it affects you, how it affects them. If they're not seeing a decrease, maybe people aren't participating the way they're supposed to.
Yeah, well, I don't want to suggest that that's the case. It could well be, there's all kinds of variables when you look at the total number. Just thinking about it, we took in a sizable amount of volume. I'm not sure if it was in June or July, from state highways that had to empty a yard. So there was a tremendous volume that came in that we weren't anticipating, that could, you know, kind of hide those kind of changes. We do have access to, I believe, the town of Easton has a separate account. We could probably come up with that number.
Okay.
And could report that back. I had that curiosity question about a year ago. It's funny, so it's a good question.
Thank you very much. We're going to move along because we're forty-five minutes late for a two o'clock public hearing, but thank you very much for your report.
Thank you very much.
Ron, if you could, add more items about the award they won, the national award?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just, I'm very proud of that. There's a, there's a national competition for excellence. And Solid Waste Association of North America is a national organization that's, it's very, it's very difficult to win an award. There are probably forty or fifty landfills that submitted. We were chosen as number one. So the Midshore landfill, I'm very proud to say, is number one in the country. The only downside is I have to go to Long Beach to accept the award next month at the SWANA convention, so, so anyway, we're very proud of that. So that's just something you can, I'm not sure how much, how many dollars that's worth a ton, but it's, it's a point of national honor. So anyway, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm new without you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an introduction of legislation. If introduced, this bill would be known as Bill Number 1253. And Madam Secretary, if you could please read the legislation.
An act to authorize Talbot County, Maryland to borrow not more than $265,000 in order to finance Easton Airport sewer improvements and to effect such borrowing by the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds payable from ad valorem taxes to be levied by the county, exempting the bonds from the provisions of Sections nine to eleven, inclusive of Article thirty-one of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the consolidation of separate series of bonds into a single bond, authorizing the refunding of such bonds and relating generally to the issuance and sale of such bonds for such purposes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And Mr. Craig, do you want to give us a, just a real quick on this one?
This is a project of the airport to connect the airport to the sewer system here in Easton. The anticipated project was about half a million dollars, but when the construction was finished up, it was about half that. So this is simply the process by which the airport, in support of the county, borrows money to pay back the construction for that over the course of twenty years. So that's what this bill is for.
Okay. And are there any other questions of the county council? And who would like to introduce this legislation? Please raise your hand by council. And this will have a public hearing on Tuesday, September tenth, 2013, at 2:00 P.M. Okay, public hearings. Now, this is a collection of bills, and basically speaking, when we, when we authorize spending in our budget, eventually, everything has to come through as a, as a bill, as a legislative bill. And so we'd like to have public hearings on all these bills. And basically, what this amounts to is Bill Number 1238 through Bill Number 1252, and it's a variety of expenses. And rather than have each bill read and vote on each bill separately and hear from the public on each individual bill, we're going to open up the public comment so that if you are interested in testifying on one of the bills, you come forward in any order that you like and say which, which bill you're interested in testifying on, and give us your public input on that. And then we will, after that, if we decide to vote on these bills, we may vote on them today, we may vote on them on the twenty-seventh at our next meeting, but we'd like to have a chance to hear what you have to say on any of these bills. So with that in mind, our timekeeper, Mrs. Price, will, will keep a three-minute time on each statement, if that's all right, unless you represent a group, in which case, say so when you arrive at the table, and you'll have seven minutes to speak. And obviously, we want to let everyone say what they want to say, so even if you come up and you're cut off at three minutes, we may have you come back if you're interested in sticking around, but we'll try to do this as quickly as we can. So we'll start over here, yes?
Mr. Bartlett, I think council can certainly consolidate the public hearings and do all the hearings on all the bills at once, but I do think that would be appropriate to read the title of each bill at the outset and the number.
Okay. So, Madam Secretary, can you please read the title of each bill?
Bill Number 1238, a bill to authorize Talbot County's share of the upgrade of the upper Maryland eastern shore radio system. Bill Number 1239, a bill to authorize Gleeb Road Water Quality Demonstration Project. Bill 1240, a bill to authorize preliminary engineering review of Goldsboro Neck and Airport Roads. Bill Number 1241, a bill to authorize shoreline improvements at Kingston Landing. Bill Number 1242, a bill to authorize the dredging of Naps Narrows and Dogwood Harbor. Bill Number 1243, a bill to authorize the Talbot County Public Schools One-to-One Laptop Initiative. Bill Number 1244, a bill to authorize roof replacement at the Talbot County Courthouse South Wing. Bill Number 1245, a bill to authorize design of roof replacement systems at St. Michael's Elementary and Middle High Schools. Bill Number 1246, a bill to authorize a capital project for the planning, design, and construction of improvements to allow the acceptance, processing, and disposal of grease by upgrading the county's existing biosolids treatment facility located at 9786 Klondike Grove, Easton, Maryland, in an amount not to exceed $3,350,000, and to authorize financing of $2,650,000 on the loan incurred to purchase the facility for a total capital expenditure of $6 million, all of which shall be repaid exclusively from the revenues generated from operation of the facility. Bill Number 1247, a bill to authorize expenditure of up to $25,000 for a capital project to maintain Black Walnut Point Stone Revetment to include placement of new stone. Bill Number 1248, a bill to authorize replacement of the air conditioning chiller at the Chapel District Elementary School. Bill Number 1249, a bill to authorize a capital project for Talbot County's share of the design, construction, and equipment costs of the Center for Allied Health and Athletics at Chesapeake College. Number 1250, a bill to amend Bill Number 1016, increasing the appropriation for improvements to the Claiborne Jettie Parking Area. Bill Number 1251, a bill to authorize drainage improvements at Deep Water Point Road. And Bill Number 1252, a bill to increase the appropriation for design, engineering, and construction of Dutchman's Lane improvements.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That's a lot of reading. We appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing, and we'll start on the left side of the room, starting at the front row, and work our way back, and then we'll move over to the right, my right side of the room. Anyone in the first row? Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Tim Junk, and I'm the Director of Midshore Riverkeeper Conservancy. We have about sixteen hundred dues-paying members, about seventy-five percent of them are from Talbot County.
Hang on, one second. Can you say which bill you'd like to testify on when you come up to the front?
Yeah, I'd like to testify about the Gleeb Road Water Demonstration Project.
Bill 1239.
I was saying, about seventy-five percent of our members are from Talbot County, so we have a fairly large constituency, and we are very much in support of this bill. We've been working with the Department of Planning and Zoning and Ray Clark on this project for some time, and you just heard quite a bit about water quality issues and had a long discussion about it. Interestingly, just in the last week or ten days, we've probably had fifteen or twenty people either come in our office, call us, or email us who are just distressed and appalled about the quality of our rivers right now. We've had a very wet season, and if any of you have been out on the river, it's pretty disgusting. We had a couple with two young kids went swimming in a tributary off the chop tank. They were immersed in dead fish, solids on the water, floating solids. Anecdotally, but truthfully, we have a Wheaton Terry on Friday went in the Y River in Talbot County and got a terrible urine infection, is on antibiotics now. We have major problems in our rivers right now, and it's affecting the health of our What worries me is if these trends continue, it's not only going to affect the health of the community, it's going to affect our economic base because people along the river, their house values will lose, will lose value, and the wealthy people, which are a predominant part of our economic base, will leave. They will leave here. People aren't going to be on rivers who can afford it, that smell bad, that have dead fish. You know, we're having one of the worst crabbing seasons in my memory. I went down to Gay Seafood two or three days ago. They had fifteen watermen working, and the day I was there, they got, they got a total of eighteen bushels of crabs in out of fifteen watermen. So this, this particular project is what I hope will be the first of many. It's, it's a significant amount of money, but it's not a significant amount of money compared to the total county budget. One of the interesting things we learned in sort of working through this project is how much cheaper it would be if, in all capital improvement projects in the future, planning and zoning had a water quality sort of component from the get-go. Because when you're, when you're going to move dirt, when you're going to change the landscape, if you think of it ahead of time and you incorporate it into the whole design, it can be done very, very effectively. We sort of began to think about this project as it was already underway. The Gleeb Road Corridor has a substantial effect on the Miles River, and it drains into the Miles River. So we have a new road there that's, that's a beautiful road. Great job was done, and we have an opportunity now to take the ditches along the side of that road and create a demonstration project which will catch water, hold water, slow water, treat and filter water for a very inexpensive price. We hope it'll be the first of many, and I would really urge, you know, our council and our community to begin to sort of incorporate a water quality consideration into everything, into how we do our, maintain our county roads, for example, certainly into our building projects. But Ms. Price made the point in the, in the... But Ms. Price made the point in the discussion with the folks who were here earlier that Talbot County has probably more linear waterway footage than any county in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. So we enjoy, you know, the gentleman was complaining that Delaware hasn't done that much, Pennsylvania hasn't done that much, New York hasn't done that much, and that's the wrong argument. You know, that's not an excuse for us not to do more. We, Maryland and Virginia, are the people who live on the bay. If we don't show an example to people like in Pennsylvania and New York, we don't even get the benefits of the bay. If we don't provide the leadership and show that we have the political will and the political courage to put our money and fix our rivers, then why can we possibly expect them to do it? So these are complicated issues, and I could spend a lot of time on it, but I just want to throw our full support behind this project, and I appreciate the work that Ray and his team have done on it. And I think it could be a really terrific project that we can show our community and our county and other counties that we are stepping up, we're spending county money to make water quality improvements.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, anyone in the second row who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
On that same bill or different bill?
On any bill you like. And if I can remind everyone to speak into the microphone, because if you lean back in the chair, the folks at home won't be able to hear you when they watch you online later. But welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name's Kirk Harper. I represent the Claiborne Association, which is a five-oh-one, C-three nonprofit group that was formed for the benefit of the Claiborne community. One of the property owners from Claiborne is here with me.
Mimi Holt.
Mimi Holt.
Thank you. Welcome.
The...
This is Bill, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is Bill Number...
Twelve Fifty.
Twelve Fifty.
Twelve Fifty.
The Claiborne Association is very active and is participating with the county staff on a number of issues. We have created a Claiborne Future Plan, which we've worked with the planning and zoning folks, and we hope to have part of the comprehensive plan revision. We are working now with planning and zoning to secure funding for a stormwater management study for the Claiborne Village Center. We're working with emergency management staff on a resilient community grant to try to make our community a better place to be in the case of storms and extensive electricity outages. And we've been working now with Public Works on the jetty preservation issue that's the subject of Bill Twelve Fifty. And we intend to accept an invitation from Public Works staff to produce our own long-term plan for the Claiborne Jetty and Wharf and Marsh area that we'd like to, at some point and in some manner, submit to the county as citizen input for any future plans the county may want to carry out in those park areas in the village of Claiborne. After meeting with Jesse Fierens about this proposed bill, I created a fact sheet, a two-page fact sheet, which we circulated to over a hundred people in the Claiborne area via an email system we have. And last night, we had a community meeting in which thirty-three people came to the Claiborne Village Hall and expressed their interest and concerns about this legislation. I have four or five comments and recommendations for you. Number one is the Bill Twelve Fifty, while it in fact does propose to amend Bill Ten Sixteen, is somewhat misleading in its title, because the purpose of Bill Twelve Fifty is to create a living shoreline on the Wharf side of the jetty in the village of Claiborne. And it would have been much more effective communication with the public if that bill had been called by the subject of the legislation. I don't need to tell you how fragile public trust is, and when bills are misnamed either by mistake or deliberately, it endangers the trust that citizens have in their government. I'm sure this was not an intentional activity on the county's part, but I had to talk down some people in Claiborne about their belief that they can't believe what the county tells them. I don't believe that's true, but accidents like this can lead to more of that. The second thing I want to say is that we support, the Claiborne community supports public use of the Claiborne jetty and the beach area at Claiborne. We have no problem with that. Third, we would like to have the county, prior to authorizing this construction of this living shoreline, do a review or a study of the best ways to preserve the whole jetty and not necessarily start with a piecemeal approach by approving a three-hundred-foot section unless that turns out to be the best action to take initially for the jetty. There may be a better place to start. There may be a design more suited to this location than the one proposed in the design that came from DNR, which shows a minimum twenty feet of marsh and thirteen feet of armor stone in an area that doesn't receive any direct wave action except from small craft that come in and out of the Claiborne area. We think probably this location might lend itself to not having any stone in the living shoreline. It might be possible, because of the low wave action there, not to put in thirteen feet of stone, width of thirteen feet of stone. And Mimi, sitting next to me, is the property owner of the piece of property that's directly impacted by that. They have about sixty-five feet of shoreline, and the proposal from DNR would create a living shoreline that's thirty-two feet wide, taking up potentially half of their shore. I think there probably could be funds available for a brief study of this area. There are unexpended funds from Bill Ten Sixteen. Some of the funds from the twenty-five thousand dollars that were appropriated under Bill Ten Sixteen have been used for a survey of the jetty area, but I think there's a substantial amount of money remaining from Bill Ten Sixteen, which was money initially appropriated for creating twelve parking spaces on the jetty, which the village of Claiborne thinks is excessive for the amount of people who visit the jetty. There's also funding available from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, which is a source that we're going to turn to, along with the planning and zoning folks, to get the money for the stormwater drainage study of Claiborne. And potentially, there's money from DNR. The bottom line is Claiborne supports the efforts to protect the jetty. We realize that there's a need for a better parking solution for visitors that come to Claiborne to enjoy the park that's the unimproved passive park that's the jetty now and the beach. And we look forward to partnering with the county staff in a study of this subject.
Thank you very much, sir. Ma'am, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I'm Mimi Holt, and my property is right at the jetty and part of the right-of-way there. And that area that they're talking about putting the living shoreline is actually growing. The grass is out beyond the pylons, even that whole section there, and it's the end of the jetty that is washing away. But also, I didn't realize that there was a bill, I guess apparently in two thousand and six, that was passed to put a parking area there. I didn't even know. And when I found out about this one being amended, amending the parking lot, I mean, I didn't, I've asked the county for years to keep me informed of what's going on, and I never hear anything. I only got this by email by our Claiborne neighbors. I would never have known of anything going on. And I don't know what the rules are for that, but I would think that there'd be some sort of contact. And again, the parking, you know, the jetty is not very wide, but I don't know the real intentions of exactly what the county is doing, but again, because they don't talk to me about anything. And, you know, there are alternatives for parking, and I think it really would impact the jetty in a negative way for the wildlife and everything there.
Thank you for speaking to us today. Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is John Scott. I'd like to speak to the same bill. I endorse the comments of the association, but there's a different aspect that I think I'd like to call to your attention. And it's kind of in an awkward position, being supportive and thankful of the attention that the council is putting to the issue, because anything to be done to improve the area there is, well, almost anything, to improve the area is positive. But what I think is, it seems as if the jetty needs to be considered in its entirety. I think frequently, it's looked at, and perhaps by this bill as well, as the usable social park kind of land that's associated with the jetty, which is maybe fifty percent of its length. The other fifty percent goes out into the Eastern Bay and protects the county wetlands, which are substantial to the inside of that, as well as my property, which is a waterfront property and adjoins the wetland area. And there are three more properties that have homes and several more properties around the side that have farmland. It is that jetty, it is that substantial additional fifty percent of the jetty that protects our homes and importantly, the wetland that the county has invested money in the past and is now being eroded because the water now on a regular basis breaches the initial jetty. And in fact, that breach of that also regularly silts in the channel that nevertheless is being, money is being spent on that channel to be dredged without repairing and protecting the jetty. So I endorse the community association recommendation that we not move ahead immediately, but that we look at the jetty in its entirety and what is the most appropriate way to spend that money and engage the community's support in its support and physical contribution to protecting the jetty and increasing the public use of the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming. Anyone else in the second row who would like to speak? Third row. Mr. Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, how often can the record on Twelve Thirty-Nine be kept open? Mr. Holfbach came prepared to testify today, but he's on his way to Wilmington on business now. He couldn't stay until the late start of the hearing.
We can certainly hold it open and put it on the agenda for the twenty-seventh, I suppose. Or he could send his comments.
Well, he could send his comments, but he just wanted to know if he had a few days or something in order to get something in the record.
I think what we'd like to do is close the comments Friday and proceed. We're probably not going to vote on these.
I'm ready.
You are ready to vote on these tonight?
There might be a few we want to hold open.
Okay. We could certainly hold a few of the bills open and not vote on them until the twenty-seventh.
We'll just hold them on.
We'd like to get them out of the way.
Hold them all on. What difference does it make?
Just asking for one.
What's the consensus?
We're considering.
Yeah, let's finish the public hearing portion, and we'll go from there, if you don't mind.
I don't care about the, I'd like to get out of here. I'd like to find out if we love it.
Take a call.
We'll be considering, Mr. Davis, if we move forward today.
I mean, I don't mind saying that we will hold the record open on Bill Twelve Thirty-Nine until the twenty-seventh.
It's your call, Mr. President. If you want to hold it open, it's your call.
But I don't want to do it without consensus of the council, so is there...
Are there three votes for holding it open?
I think the agreement from day one was that if one council member wishes to have something done, if there's no objection, everybody would go with it. I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. Then we'll hold it open. Thank you. Is there anyone else on the left side of the room who would like to speak on any of these bills? Mr. Craig?
No.
Is there something you'd like to say?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone else on the left side of the room who would like to speak on any of these bills? Okay, we'll move over to the first row of my right side of the room. Mr. Sherman.
My name is Jack Sherman. I live in Eastern Club East off of Dutchman's Lane Road. I'm here representing the Board of Directors of the Eastern Club East Community Association. I will speak very briefly here concerning Bill Number One Two Five Two, of which we are totally in support of. First off, since the opening of Royal Farms a few years back and the completion of the final building phases of our community at Eastern Club East in two thousand and ten, there has been a very noticeable increase in vehicle and pedestrian traffic using Dutchman's Lane east of Route Fifty. This roadway is the main access to Route Fifty and the remainder of Talbot County for approximately twelve hundred local residents on both sides of that road, not just our community. Secondly, the traffic increase in the basically inadequate road creates a serious public safety issue. The absence of a sidewalk, for example, forces pedestrians to walk in the driving lanes, particularly in inclement weather. There are no shoulders on this section of the roadway. Some of our residents have reported near misses with pedestrians, particularly when driving at night or wet weather. These reports have come in over the last three years, and the county council has been informed of this on more than one occasion. The road surface continues to deteriorate each year. The frequent failure of pothole patches creates further safety issues for vehicles and pedestrians when drivers swerve to avoid these potholes. Thirdly, although we wish the full upgrade, which the county engineer has been working on for almost seven years, even though this full upgrade of the road is not economically feasible at this time, we place pedestrian safety well above easy driving, and we believe the addition of a sidewalk and its accompanying drainage system is an urgent necessity now, and we urge the county council to approve this bill, Number Twelve Fifty-Two. We'd like to close by noting that the Eastern Club East residents, including myself, have alerted county officials to the availability of grants through the new Maryland State Transportation Alternatives Program called TAP. This was done this spring. As a result, the Talbot County engineer was able to file a successful grant application for an anticipated six hundred thousand dollars in TAP funding that will substantially reduce the county's cost for this project as it relates to Bill One Two Five Two we're discussing today. The Board of Directors, thanks you for your consideration of these comments and your ongoing support for this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherman. Anyone else in the front row who would like to speak? Moving towards the back, anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Eric Fisher with Chesapeake Bay Foundation here at one oh two East Dover Street, here in support of Bill Twelve Thirty-Nine, the Gleeb Road Water Quality Improvement Project. As Mr. Junkin alluded to earlier, this project is a piece of a larger collaborative effort between County Public Works, the Nature Conservancy, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Midshore Riverkeeper, and many in the agricultural community as well, to look at how we manage our ditches, try to manage them better, and also try to manage them for cost-effective pollution reduction. This is very much a science-based program that employs some pretty cutting-edge targeting to identify those locations that hold the greatest potential for nutrient reduction per... per pound. So we are very excited about the potential of this larger program, and the demonstration project in particular, to show very cost-effective local nutrient reductions. Ultimately, I think it's an investment in innovation here in Talbot County. It's an investment in partnership, and I think those are the key ingredients to getting this bay and our local waters cleaned up. There's unfortunately no single magic bullet, but these local investments, I think, will pay dividends for our waters and our residents, as well as the cleanup as a whole. So, to be brief, but to the point, we do support this bill, and we would respectfully encourage you to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Anyone else on the right side of the room who would like to testify today on any of these bills? Okay. Is it the council's pleasure to close the public hearing on all bills except for Bill Number 1239?
It is.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay, then we'll do that. And at this time, we can vote on the rest of these bills at this time, or hold them off till the 27th of August.
If I may, Mr. President, I mean, is there further discussion before?
Yes.
I would make a motion that, with the exception of Bill 1239, that all bills be moved to third reader at this time.
Okay, there's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollis to move all these bills forward with the exception of Bill Number 1239. Any comments before we vote?
Just wondered if we want to hold over Bill Number 1250 on the Clayburn Jetty parking area, to think about that a little bit more. They presented us some information. If we're holding one over, if anybody minds, we hold that one over for a little while?
I'll amend my motion, Mr. President, will also include Bill 1250 also to be held over at this time.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
There's a second. I was actually planning to vote against it, Ms. Price, but it's probably better to have conversation first, so I second that.
Okay. The motion is made by Mr. Pack and seconded by Mr. Hollis to vote on all bills with the exception of Bill 1239 and 1250. Is there any other comments? Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Okay. So now, at this time, is there a motion to vote on Bill Number, I guess we have to do these one at a time, right? Okay. Bill Number 1238 for the upgrade of the Upper Maryland Eastern Shore radio system.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Made by Mr. Hollis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill Number 1240 to authorize preliminary engineering review of Goldsboro Neck and Airport Roads.
Motion.
Made by Mr. Hollis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill Number 1241, a bill to authorize shoreline improvements at Kingston Landing. Is there a motion?
Move.
Made by Mr. Pack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollis. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
A Bill Number 1242 to authorize the dredging of Nap Narrows and Dogwood Harbor.
So move.
Made by Mr. Pack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollis. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill Number 1243, a bill to authorize the Talbot County Public Schools One-to-One Laptop Initiative. Is there a motion?
Are we having any discussion on any of them?
You're welcome to chime in.
Before or after the motion?
Well, we have, we'll get a motion in a second, and then we'll discuss it at that time. But we've got to have that first.
Yes, sir.
All right, made by Mr. Pack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollis. Go ahead, I'm sorry, yes.
Just a comment. In investigating laptops with a son going off to college and seeing what you can get for half to a third of probably what the schools are paying for Apple, I, it's just a comment to them to think about investigating, switching away from that to doing something more cost-effective. I do agree that, you know, the laptops or access to computers is definitely important, but it is very expensive. When we looked into choosing a laptop for my son, and I looked at the cost of what they are, and what we're able to get for, you know, again, a third to half the cost, I would just love to see them investigate, moving away from that and considering going to another brand to try to save the taxpayers some money.
Okay. Anyone else regarding laptops? Mr. Duncan?
I think we've had this discussion.
Okay, fine. So we have a motion and a second. I would just say that this year we are, we have cut our yearly stipend for the laptops in half. Funny you should ask.
No, we didn't spend anything last year.
Well, okay, but every other year, we spent $400,000. Some years, we spent $600,000. This year, we're spending $200,000. And the theory is that they have every right to rent these items rather than buy them, and we figured if $200,000 still allows the program to continue, and they have to lease them rather than buy them, that that was one way to go to help save the county taxpayers some funds. So I think we did do that. And so, that being said, I certainly endorse the program. I've seen the benefits of it, and I think we should continue it into the future, but I agree that there's always a new technology coming out, and we should encourage the school board to look at that new technology and maybe bring it onboard if we can save the taxpayers money and still get the same effect.
Right. I mean, they're not doing it for $200,000. They're picking up the other $200,000 or $250,000 through their regular amount of money out of their operating expense. So it's still over a $400,000 investment. So it, just because we're only doing $200,000 in capital doesn't mean the cost of this program is only $200,000.
You're drawing me into this conversation.
Oh, boy, here we go. I knew he couldn't sit there.
You're just drawing me right into it.
Quietly.
Well, real quick, and I think everyone knows where I stand on laptops. No other school district in the state has laptops. Wait, do we have that? There's no proof, and you look at statistical scores of Talbot County opposed to other schools, that they've improved their system whatsoever. At the present time, the whiteboards, they're coming to whiteboards now, they're putting in the schools for, that's the bell or whistle of the day. Next week, there'll be something else. So the problem is that laptops, most of the children have access to laptops. They have them in the library, and we're spending enormous amounts of money furnishing laptops for everyone that comes into that school. And I just don't, it's just, we talk about government spending, we talk about government cutting, but we keep having programs like this. And Apple absolutely loves it because they've got a standing contract with their school system. But anyhow, I could go on and on. I won't. I won't belabor it because I think I've been there many times, and so, but thank you, Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet.
We have a motion and a second, and the discussion, I guess unless there are any other comments, is now closed. So Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Okay, thank you. We are on Bill Number 1244, a bill to authorize roof replacement at the Talbot County Courthouse South Wing. Is there a motion?
So move.
Made by Mr. Pack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollis. Any questions, comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill 1245, to authorize design of roof replacement systems at St. Michael's Elementary and Middle High Schools. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Made by Mr. Hollis. Second by Mr. Pack. Any comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill Number 1246, a bill to upgrade the Klondike Road facility to include grease treatment.
Motion.
Made by, motion is made by Mr. Hollis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pack. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill 1247, a bill to authorize expenditures of up to $25,000 for a capital project to maintain Black Walnut Point Stone Revetment. Is there a motion?
Move.
Made by Mr. Pack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hollis. Any comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Bill 1248, a bill to authorize replacement of the air conditioning chiller at the Chapel District Elementary School. Is there a motion?
So move.
Made by Mr. Pack.
Second.
Second by Ms. Price. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Any discussion on this one?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I just reiterate that, um, you know, this wasn't a slam dunk. It was a three to two county vote, uh, of the five counties, and a three to two vote in here. And now, especially with the delay of the hospital, one of the big things that they said they need, the reason they needed to do this was because they were not going to have space in the new hospital. Well, they still, as far as I know, still have their space in the existing hospital. Um, and I know that the horse has left the barn as far as the state funding and all, but it didn't make a couple counties happy to go forward with this. Um, it obviously was a time when they tried just to get the, um, the athletics facility upgraded and that was voted down. So, just wanted to reiterate the comment, especially with the hospital delay.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Mr. Duncan?
Miss, thank you. No.
Okay. I would just say that, you know, hindsight is 20-20. We did not know about the delay of the hospital when we voted on this project and agreed to spend the money on the architectural work that needed to be done and move the thing forward. And yes, indeed, it was a very close vote with a couple of counties saying, "Please don't do this," uh, and the majority, uh, three of the five counties saying to move forward. And even, uh, I think our county was the tie-breaking county and this council split three to two on that item, so it was an extremely close vote. But I think, uh, in looking at the facility that's there and looking at, uh, our commitment to the hospital, even though the hospital may be delaying, it's still nevertheless an important commitment we're making to the hospital and to the nursing program, et cetera. Um, I hope it all works out for us, but as this council has done in previous, uh, months, we're going to press on regardless. And so, um, that's the way I see this vote.
And let's not forget, we had an aging building on that campus there at the, at the college that needed much, much work done to it. And as you said, Mr. Bartlet, you know, um, hindsight is 50-50. Perhaps if we had known about the strolling delays, some other decisions may have been made. But be that as it may, uh, so we had a building there, the athletic building, that had serious, serious, um, structural, um, I wouldn't say damaged, but issues to it, uh, that we definitely need to get in there and make some repair to it. It was brought to our attention, it's probably best to go ahead and rebuild the building. That's what we're doing. So, um, I'm comfortable with my decision today as I was when previously made, so.
Thank you. This is Bill 1249. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Okay. Bill 1250, we're going to hold over. Bill number 1251, a bill to authorize drainage improvements at Deep Water Point Road. Is there a motion? Made by Mr. Hollis?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pack. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
And last but not least, Bill number 1252, a bill to increase the appropriation for design, engineering, and construction of Dutchman's Lane improvements. Is there a motion?
Yes, there is a motion.
Made by Mr. Hollis. Is there a second?
Yes, there is a second.
By Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, or any discussion? Discussion, Mr. Duncan?
Yes, um...
Jack, are you paying attention out there? I'm sorry, Mr. Duncan.
Is that one of the 1800 votes you're talking about? What is troubling with this project is that, I'll show you, number one, last year we did 34 miles of roads resurfacing. Our, yeah, this year, it's going to be 34 miles of road. We're spending, what is the final number on, on this project as far as dollars and cents?
One and a half.
The project is scheduled to be roughly 1.5 million.
1.5 million. We're spending on sidewalks, streetlights, and, and...
No streetlights.
No streetlights.
Sidewalks and foot.
Uh, sidewalks and water, right, okay. The state, in the last four years, has given us no money, or is it five years?
Limited money.
Okay. No money, Michael says. How long, how many years?
I believe it's five years.
Five years. I've received numerous calls from folks who live from Unionville to, to various places where the roads deteriorating, we're patching them, and they're complaining about the patching of roads. And I look at, at what we're spending this type of money on putting sidewalks, which you just described, down the road, and the road itself is in the town of Easton. And why is this troubling me? The fact is, most of the time in the town of Easton, the developers have to put the roads in. They made Lovegram out here to, uh, to Trent, Trent Haven, put sidewalks in afterwards, and yet the county is putting these roads in now. That's number one. Number two, it is in the town of Easton. I remember the same scenario years ago when we took on Elliot Road, which is right in the middle of Easton, right by Walmart. The county takes care of a road inside of the town of Easton. That's not right. It shouldn't happen. Are we going to take care of roads inside the town of St. Michael's? Crap. Oxford. We can go on and on. True, Easton is in the town, is in the county, as, as, I recognize that. The town pays taxes, our people pay taxes in town, they should take care of their own roads. What I'm afraid of, I won't be here, but years later, the county will still have this road to take care of in the town of Easton. And more development will go out that way. So, we're contributing, what we're doing is building roads inside the town of Easton. It's been publicly said that Easton doesn't build roads. They don't build roads. Indeed, they don't. They don't have to. If we build them, most of the time, the developer has to build the roads. So, that's very troubling to me that the folks out in the county have to subsidize Easton by building roads in their town, which will continue on for years to come. In all respect to, uh, the gentleman's, uh, presentation here, uh, the traffic he refers to and the pedestrian traffic, I've been out there on numerous occasions, and I can't, I don't remember seeing anyone walking down that road. I invite anyone to go out there on, on Dutchman's Lane, walk out there and find people walking down that road. And where's the, where does, or the street, or sidewalk, where does the sidewalk go to? The sidewalk goes to a, a convenience store and a car dealership. I would suggest that people in Easton Club, people in, in Stony Ridge or whatever, if they want to walk, there's ample room to walk in their own communities, they can walk all around those communities. And yet, we're spending all this money, uh, to, to fix this area up. There's nothing wrong with the project, don't get me wrong, but the problem right now, other than the fact it's in town of Easton, it's a few things, just, other than right now, our roads in the county are deteriorating. We can better utilize this money, in my opinion, to fix some of these roads that are falling apart out in the county. We've been promised more money this year from the state. Whether it happens or not is something else. We don't know. But I can assure you, it's not going to be the type of money we're going to need because the last four years, very little attention has been paid to our roads, and they're going to start to fall apart. And I welcome up council people, I'll ask them if they'll call all four council members besides myself, to let them know how they feel about the county roads when we're spending like this. Now, how much will this money fix? Not much, that's for sure, because we spent 3.7 million dollars on what Gleeb Road, which is two miles long?
It's about 2.7.
2.7. So, that doesn't go very far, but on the other hand, it's something. And, and it's just troubling to me that, that, uh, we're doing this project at this time. Can we do it later? I would suggest we probably can, but not in the days and climate as far as dollars and cents is concerned. And again, I allude to the fact that it's in town and pedestrian traffic, I just don't see it. I've been here for 76 years, and I've been on Dutchman's Lane a long time, and, uh, they may walk down there, but I don't know when. I've been at night to day and early morning, and I don't see people walking down that road.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone else?
I guess. We disagree about this every time we talk about it.
Yes, we do, indeed.
I understand that, and you know how much I truly do respect your opinion on things. I just simply don't share it on this one. And I'm not going to go down point by point and argue with you again about how I disagree. I've said it before, and I will say it again, that I believe there's justification for this project. It's been on the books for many years. The funding is there, and it needs to move forward. I think this is truly one of those sad cases where you need three votes to get a project through, and I'm somewhat confident that we have those three votes today, Mr. Duncan, so that's all I'm going to lay out.
Let me, let me just say, of course, uh, we have had discussions on this project, and as Mr. Hollis has said, this project has been on the books, this Dutchman's Lane phase-in project, you know, the, the culvert and then the additional work after that, and this is the, the next phase in this project. And it has been on the books for some time, and we've set it aside due to cost restrictions. We had several, several years back, we were able to get some additional funding, and now we're able to move forward with the project. Um, I'm not willing to wait until someone instructs in the road to say, "Oh, we should have widened that roadway, we should have gotten sidewalk." Mr. Duncan, let me remind you of a statement you made dealing with the guardrails on Route 50. You emphatically said, "I have never in my lifetime seen a car cross Route 50." And the very next week, what happened? Car crossed Route 50. So, just, so I'm not ready to speak in absolutes to say no one would ever be hit on a roadway, but when I hear citizens say, and I'm, I'm not on Dutchman's Lane 24/7, I don't live out in Dutchman's Lane, so I don't know what happens after nightfall when those kids start going down to Royal Farm to get their slurpees and their hot dogs, whatever they, they go down to get. I'm not there. But I am not willing to sit here in this council seat and say, "Let me wait till one of them get hit, and then we'll consider widening the road and putting in sidewalks." I'm not, uh, I'm not as, um, comfortable with that as you may be. Um, again, the project has been on the books for some time. Uh, it is a county road. If the town never takes this road over, I wouldn't care. I wouldn't care not one iota. It is a county road, it's a county problem, and we need to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
Well, the only thing, Mr. Pack, I could pick any road here to somebody to get run over on any road.
Absolutely.
So, it doesn't matter. It happens. It happens right out here on, on going across to the shopping center. They put up a traffic signal now for, for, as unfortunate it happens, it's unfortunate that people cross the center line and kill people. But we spend millions and millions and millions of dollars. Everyone talks about the, the deficits and the money we're spending, and they're spending millions of dollars that, that, uh, that we don't have, quite frankly. And, and no one wants to cut back and look at things and say, "Hey, things will happen if you don't do a certain thing." That's right, things will still happen. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't start looking at, at the necessary improvements we have to make, the necessary improvements we have to make, that we're going to go down a tube, we're going to be like Detroit, we're going to be like everyone else. This country can't stand it, the state can't stand it, and this county can't stand it. And I'll tell you right now that, that, uh, it's, it's, uh, well, I can go on, but it's just, uh, I just don't want to see the county, as far as the money is concerned, I was on the council when we put it there. That was 20 years ago. And I'll be honest, why we put it there? We had all kinds of projects we put money into. We just left it there. That money was left there. And we've moved money out of capital projects hundreds of times, the different capital projects. That's not unusual. We'll, we'll have some projects up there that we'll, we know darn well we're not going to get to them, and we'll move the money out of them. But that's, that's another case. But to say that, that, uh, do I feel for someone to get hit on that road, some shop? Yes. Can you get hit on Gleeb Road? Can you get hit on Oxford, something like that? Pick a road. Pick anything. People can get killed on those roads. There's no question about it.
Well, I'm, I'm almost sure, if you look at the census, the population has grown in that sector from it, from what it was 20 years ago. So, we have...
There's no question about it.
We have more residents out there. Um, we do now have a Royal Farm, which we didn't have five, six years ago, um, and that road is being traveled more by younger pedestrians, and we need to, we need to make sure we secure it.
They're all senior citizens, with the exception of senior citizens.
I wouldn't say that. I think that's, that's quite a number of young people there, uh, in that, in that...
Well, anyhow, look, you, you got your three votes, so go ahead. I guess...
I just want to say, before we... Go ahead, Ms. Price.
All right. Yeah, we have fun up here. This issue is, is one I think is, it definitely has torn me in, in two different directions. The money was put there at a time when the county was flush with funds, and I wasn't here then, but they had to put it someplace, and things change. And we had $2, $3 million of roads money coming in. And we've changed this, the scope of this project to something lesser. There have been some funds identified. We appreciate, um, being told about the possibility of TAP funds, um, and that makes it, you know, it makes it more palatable. But I'm just not sure we should spend a couple million dollars because they put in of Royal Farms. I mean, you can get most of, on the Stony Ridge side, you can walk through the Stony Ridge Development and get most of the way there. And is it our job because, it, you know, it can be taken different ways. Nobody wants anybody to get hit. Is it our job to spend $2 or $3 million because somebody decides they want to walk in the middle of the road? I mean, if you could walk in the grass, you could walk through the development, you know, if our job is to improve roadways, then let's make sure that we're improving the roadways that benefit, you know, the majority of the citizens. And I, and I agree that there's been a lot of growth out there. There's a lot of people that live out, out there. A whole new development is, in addition to Easton Club East, there's, you know, the Stony Ridge, and in addition to Corbinville, that's there. Um, but there's been a lot of money spent there, and it's, it's just a really difficult thing to do because for everybody who speaks up, and obviously, Easton Club, you know, we, we appreciate your concerns, and you are concerned about the people that are walking in. The residents there, um, you know, are an older population that maybe driving that type of road is more difficult, um, and if there's somebody there, now I've lost my train of thought happens, um, it's, it's, it's difficult. But the, you know, somebody makes a lot of vocalization about something and says it's happening, and then there's thousands of other people who have needs in their communities, and because they chose not to make, be vocal, I mean, they've called you, I, unfortunately, I haven't gotten calls, but I know there's people think about that. They're going to look at this and say, "Why is Talbot County spending all this money on a quarter mile of road, even though they're not here saying something?" And then there's people, so we're not going to make everybody happy no matter what we do. You know, we can make 1,200 people, um, more satisfied. I think they're still going to want more. They're going to want the whole project to be done at some point. And then you make, you know, a 10,000 upset because their road's not getting done. So, you know, we face these types of decisions all the time.
I, I think it would be good to just remember that this, this was one of several roads identified many years ago as having safety deficiencies. This project was not pulled out of the sky. It is not on the capital improvement program because there are 800 voting residents, as Mr. Duncan continually tells me, in Easton Club East. It's put there because there are safety issues. Is it the highest priority, we'd be able to find other roads that have safety deficiencies? Absolutely. Had a telephone call two weeks ago about some passing we're doing on another road. Called the county manager, it's been taken care of. All other safety improvements, all other concerns about roadway improvements will not cease because we're funding a project that has been on the books to move forward for many, many years. I don't want the public to think that only because a community spoke up, that it ended up on the capital improvement program. That is absolutely not the case. It's there because of identified safety deficiencies, so.
I just want to say, before we move on on this, that we did make, I, what I think are some considerable improvements to what was programmed for Phase Three. I think we had about a $3 million project online, and we've cut that price in half because of economic realities. We are doing a pedestrian walkway down the one side of the road and improving the storm drainage and doing what we can for the road surface for basically half the funds that we were going to spend, and we've provided TAP funds of $600,000 to, to help out even more. So, we're being fiscally prudent. We are proceeding with a project, albeit a scaled-back project than what we originally envisioned for that, with the understanding that at some point, that other property that exists between Easton Club East and the town of Easton will one day be developed, will be just like Easton Club East, and at that time, we can finish the road using developer money and do what we can to ensure pedestrian safety in the meantime. Um, so, anyway, I, I just don't want you to think that we're up here spending money. We're not relocating $600,000 worth of utility lines. You may recall that Verizon wanted $300,000 just to relocate a phone line, and Eastern Utilities wanted $300,000 to do a gas line, an electric line, and some other line. And you look at that, and you say to yourself, "How can a phone line be worth $300,000?" And all of these other lines are worth $300,000. So, that, all, all that stuff is going to sit there on those telephone poles and not cost us a dime under this phase. And later, we'll deal with that when we get there, if this other property comes into the town. And at that time, hopefully, we can give the whole road to the town of Easton and get the developer to pay for the improvements. So, anyway, I think we've got a reasonable compromise. We've worked with the citizens out there who have concerns, and I think we've, we're trying to save the taxpayer money and to use that money to help pave the other roads in the county, which we are committed to doing 30 miles a year of repaving of roads, which we did last year and which Ricky Ball, I think, is working on this year. So, over time, we'll start to get caught back up with the condition of the roads. But anyway, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had the comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
I'm torn, but aye.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. County managers' report. Mr. Craig.
Mr. President, if I could go back to the two bills that we've carried over, just want to clarify the public record on Bill 1239 and 1250. Is that to be held over to the next council meeting or solely to this Friday? Was the council's pleasure, and then we can choose to take that with the council's pleasure at some future date? I just want to make sure when the, the public hearing will be held open to.
Thought we'd discussed with Mr. Hughes allowing Mr. Ospat to do written comments by Friday, but it could be, I don't know what...
Meaning this Friday or next Friday or... I, I, I thought we'd leave it open until the 27th, if he wanted to come back on the 27th.
I don't think it was decided, that's why I asked the council to discuss it, so...
Okay. I, I was sort of thinking that on the 27th, we would take up those two bills, and anyone who wanted to come speak or present anything in the meantime would be able to because the record is held open. Is that, is that okay?
It doesn't make any difference, right?
No.
Just don't vote until that.
Right.
I'd like to hear it in person.
Okay. And that way, like, in listening to the Claiborne situation and the jetty, I was thinking maybe I ought to take a drive down there with my papers and just take a good look around, because we have aerial photos of that, but until you kind of really see it. So, I'd like to, in the meantime, go out there and take a look at it, but, uh...
Yeah, I'd like to join you. That would be good.
Yeah. So, anyway, we'll leave that open until the 27th and then, uh, close the record and vote at that time.
Thank you very much. I do have several items for your consideration today. The first is board committee appointments. I have two board committee appointments for your consideration. The first is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The town of St. Michael is requesting the reappointment of Mr. Jeff Richardson to the Talbot County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to reappoint Jeff Richardson to the Parks and Rec Board?
Motion.
Made by Mr. Hollis, second by Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Talbot County Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council is requesting the appointment of Mr. Gary Frye to complete the unexpired term on the Talbot County Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council. Mr. Frye is Director of Addictions for Queen Anne's County and will soon be also appointed to the Talbot County Addictions.
Is there a motion to approve Mr. Gary Frye to the Talbot County Local Drug and Alcohol Abuse Prevention? Made by Mr. Pack?
Second.
Second by Ms. Price. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye. First two items I have under, uh, requests are, um, for budget items in the current FY 2014 budget year, requesting council approval to purchase the 2013 Chevy Impala in the amount of $14,815 for the Department of Corrections. Capital funds were approved for this in the amount of $18,000.
There a motion to approve? Made by Mr. Pack. Is there a second? No second? I'll second. Okay. Discussion.
Is there a second?
He's second.
I'll second. So, we're here for discussion now. We have an opportunity to discuss this, right? Okay. So, this is a, uh, this is a, buying a 2013 car, it is a used car with 9,000 miles on it, uh, for use by the Department of Corrections, right? To transport, not necessarily prisoners, but to transport...
Definitely not prisoner.
It's not for prison, prisoner, prisoner transport. It's for, uh, travel and communications with the Department of Corrections staff when they have to go to meetings around the state, meet with, uh, other detention centers to discuss items. They, they don't have a vehicle currently that they have.
Okay.
Do they have access to vehicles, Mr. Craig?
They do have access to vehicles.
Okay. Okay.
And this is one that Director Devlin came in with his line staff and made clear that the current vehicle that they had was not suitable to, to his staff. And then, he needed something that would be more comfortable for them, give them more legroom. And so, we did put this in the budget to address that need of that department. I feel they went out and got a used vehicle for 14, 14,000 and that's a reasonable price for that, that make and model of vehicle with that mileage on it. So, I don't feel anything is wrong with approving this and moving it forward to address the department's need.
Well, I mean, you said that it's for comfort and for more legroom. When they do have access to other vehicles, they probably don't travel, it's not like they're traveling daily in it. And so, for the few times that they need to travel, I don't know that it's worth $15,000 with the taxpayer dollars for that purpose.
I don't, I honestly don't have a problem with it. I know that Director Devinens is, is very cost-conscious in terms of what he asks for every year and I don't think he would, he would ask for this vehicle if he didn't need it. And I support his request. Mr. Duncan? Or, I guess you're, you're holding the gavel, so you're in charge.
When do I get it back?
Never.
Any comments, Mr. Duncan?
No. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Am I allowed to have the gavel back before we call for a vote?
Take the gavel, Mr. Craig. You're done?
Please.
Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
No.
Mr. Duncan?
Local boy?
Number five. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Craig?
Next item I have, council is consideration of the Roads Department. Capital funds in the amount of $30,000 approved in this year's budget for purchasing the vehicle to be utilized for the Roads Department to travel throughout the county. It's a 2014 Ford Explorer four-wheel drive. Price is $25,479.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Made by Mr. Pack?
Just the beginning.
Is there a second?
No.
Second. Second by Mr. Hollis. This one I see had several quotes, three, three different quotations on this vehicle as I, am I right? I don't see the...
Was it the state contract?
I'm sorry. This is the one that was on the state contract. This is the one that I wasn't sure of, actually, because it didn't have quotes.
State of Maryland offers bids through, to all the different dealers, state contracts, provide a certain specification of vehicle. This contract method has been in place. The state of Maryland bid that out. This is the bid for the Ford, 2014 Ford Explorer for this vehicle.
Okay, so, the state of Maryland would pay this price for this vehicle?
That's correct.
Based on their contract?
If they were to buy it.
Okay.
And counties and municipalities are permitted to piggyback and gain that same price?
Mm-hmm.
Which we've done many times in the past.
Yeah, no, you're right. I, I just, sometimes I think that it's good to see different dealers bid on, on vehicles like this, but I, you know, I know what these things cost and this seems like a good price for what it is. And I don't, I don't necessarily, I would rather see it bid out, but I, I could see the advantage of this way as well.
Well, it's also good to try to shop local if we can as well. So, I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages to each method.
All right, so, we have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, please call the rolls.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Craig, I'm sorry, just to comment on the last bid, and I've been through it myself when I was in your position. We should be making an effort and we may well have to contact the local dealerships in Talbot County. Mr. Stamp's already shaking his head yes, to make sure that we're not just buying out of the county simply on the state contract. We should always be trying to buy in the county if we can. Thank you.
I believe each time we do purchase a vehicle in this case, we do contact all the local dealers.
Great.
This particular bid on, I'm sure we did. On this, we're not, I haven't heard specifically, but on the others, I know that we have.
This is Hertrix here, right?
Delaware.
Hertrix in Delaware.
Well, they're, they're here, but they're probably, their main office is probably in Delaware.
But, I'd prefer to have a Hertrix Easton Ford dealer representative sell the car than the guy in Delaware. That's all right. Give credit for the sale, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Craig?
Mr. Hollis, I'll give back more information.
No, I'm, I'm fine. You understand, I think you agree.
Next item I have is the Eastern Airport, requesting council approval to extend the engineering contract with URS through June of 2014. The purpose of this extension is to complete projects that they are currently working on. There are no additional costs associated with that, although costs will continue to, to occur under the current contract. It's just a timed extension that we're asking for this time.
Is there a motion to approve the, the extension of the URS Engineering Services contract?
Motion.
Made by Ms. Price?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Next item I have is for the three requests from the Department of Emergency Services. First is requesting council approval to replace an engine in a 2008 ambulance that, whose engine blew this week. Emergency repair for an ambulance that has 77,000 miles on it, a 2008 F-450 Horton ambulance. The repair, cost of this repair is $13,750. Wish, asking for approval to, we will pay for this out of current year budgeted funds to the extent possible and keep you updated as we go through the year on how that, this fund's going.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the engine replacement for the Horton ambulance?
Motion.
Made by Mr. Hollis?
Correct.
Second by Mr. Pack. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Two more items for the Department of Emergency Services. The first is requesting council approval to spend $16,000 of Homeland Security grant funds to help fund a computer-aided dispatch or CAD system for the Eastern Police Department. It's part of the Public Safety Information Sharing Project. Again, the $16,000 will offset the entire cost of the project. This is over $48,000. We are simply contributing funds from the grant that is offered through the county to the Eastern Police Department for this upgrade.
Motion.
I, I had a question on this one, if Mr. Stamp wouldn't mind coming forward. I'm just trying to get a handle on these, these communication issues between the towns and the counties and the amount of money we're going to spend on all these radio upgrades and everything. Are inclusive of radios and equipment for the town of Easton, for example, town of St. Michael's, et cetera?
Okay. So, there are separate projects. One is the upgrade of the tri-county radio system. To answer that question with regard to mobile and portable radios, the towns actually purchased their own radios to ride on the system. The town of Easton in particular purchased their own radios to ride on that system. The issue that we're here today about is the Public Information Sharing Project and that is a project that the state of Maryland, under Governor O'Malley's 12 Homeland Security Goals, one of his goals is data sharing or data interoperability between law enforcement agencies. The state of Maryland actually bid out and awarded a contract to a company to put in a computer-aided dispatch records management system for all state policing agencies and to open that up to share with local governments the opportunity to join that system. We've chose to, and you have approved, to join the records management portion of that system. All of our local municipal police departments, as well as the county sheriff's office, would join that system, be able to share data amongst themselves and with the state of Maryland. We'll be the first county in the state of Maryland to join that, that statewide program, which is a good thing. The, the entire project, which is about $275,000, is paid for 100% with grant, Homeland Security Grant Funds. So, no local budgeted dollars are going toward this project. And as part of that overall project, we need to bring the police, the Eastern Police Department over to the same computer-aided dispatch platform as we use at Talbot Center, so that we're on both the same platform to put data into this records management sharing program. Also, by the Eastern Police Department moving over to that same computer-aided dispatch platform, we'll be able to back each other up better. So, if the Eastern Police Department's dispatch goes down for whatever reason, they can come over to Talbot Center and dispatch and we can do vice versa.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Where's it, the 32,915, the total project was 48,915.
The town of Easton would bear the expense for the remainder of the cost.
So, are they picking up the other 32,000?
Correct.
Are they, did they apply for grant funds or is that, do you know?
There aren't grant funds eligible. The only grant funds we have that are eligible that we control are $16,000 to go toward this project. The remainder of the burden, the 32,000, would be on the town of Easton, of which they, the Eastern Police Department is talking with their, their town council about funding the remainder of the 32,000. I don't know where they are on that.
So, if they don't, what happens to the 16?
If they don't, then the project couldn't go forward.
And then, you said the total, total project, is that for the state or for Talbot County? It's 275,000?
That's for the Public Safety Information Sharing Project, of which we've already talked about and you approved a portion, you've approved that...
Is that just for Talbot County?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. I don't, I don't know that we, we all, we asked for a motion on this yet. Is there a motion? Made by Mr. Hollis?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pack? Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Last item for the Emergency Services Department is a request by council to spend $22,500 of, again, Homeland Security Grant Funds to extend the county's contract with Blackboard Incorporated for one year. See the county's Connect CTY, Countywide Alert and Warning System, to be used in emergencies to contact residents throughout the county. Again, this grant is for $22,500.
So, this is the system that if we have a major storm or something, makes phone calls to each citizen saying, you know, beware of floodwaters or what have you, gives them a, a status update or if there's some emergency, local emergency?
That's correct. And we also use it on a daily basis for internal operations due to mass calling, for alerting some off-duty personnel and what have you. So, we get, we get daily beneficial use operationally as well as being able to, to contact the public. The most recent use was just the other day, the sheriff's office used it for breaking and entering that occurred, suspects relieving the area. We called, we drew a perimeter around that area at the request of the sheriff's office and put a call out for people to be on the lookout and be aware.
Great.
Same system, it's a similar system, but we'll use it to notify residents for...
And, and this is the ongoing yearly cost of this item? I mean, in other words, it costs 22.5 every year, basically?
It, it does and we, we've asked to extend it for a year. We really want to look at other like systems during this next year to see if we want to continue with this product or whether we want to look at another product that may offer us greater benefit at reduced cost.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Made by Ms. Price, second by Mr. Pack, to spend 22.5 on the Blackboard Inc. system for Connect CTY. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartlet?
Aye.
Mr. Hollis?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Duncan?
Aye.
Counsel, last request I have, and then a couple of announcements, is each year that the, the state of Maryland receives an allotted amount per county, per jurisdiction, to issue bonds for housing purposes. In order for the state to utilize those purposes, those counties which are not going to be utilized, their allocation are requested to return that allocation to the state for use elsewhere. So, I'm requesting that the council approve, council approval to allow the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development to issue housing bonds in the amount of $1,276,539 on behalf of Talbot County elsewhere in the state. So, basically, we're returning our allotment to the state so that they can use that, this department can use that elsewhere.
Okay.
Mr. Craig, these, these housing bonds, and I didn't read down through this, this portion of my packet, were these, were these dollars that go towards rental assistance? Are they helping people with staying at home? How are these bonds used?
Funds are solely utilized to, to build, issued, to bond for funds in order to build low-income, low to moderate-income housing projects. So, it is to support projects that are building projects and meet certain criteria.
So, these have to be new, new construction projects, they're not existing?
We have no, we have no applicable projects in the county.
No, no.
So, for example, that, that St. Michael's Riverwoods project, for example? They're, they're looking for some contribution by the county. Would that not be appropriate for these funds?
It would not qualify for this program. They're working directly with this department at the state level to provide grants for another, another issues. This would be, as I understand it, local government-issued bonds that will provide for housing so that the county government would take on the debt in order to build those, those programs.
So, is this, is this money we're allocated for that purpose that we just simply didn't use because we didn't have a project worthy of it? So, use it or lose it kind of thing?
It is. It's allocation that's attributed to all 23 counties throughout the state.
So, we're not coming out of pocket for this money, obviously. In any event, this is money given to the county and we just haven't figured out a use for it.
I'm not, that, that...
No. It's not, I'm sorry. We've never, the county's never had the staff to run the program and implement it, run the bond program. It's always been easier to hand it back to the state so they could run it through their books, have their staff run the program. If you look at the last page of the handout, you'll see it actually has been affected to a certain extent for the last two years in terms of the sum of the money going out into the community, but not all of it.
Okay.
Counsel, it's your pleasure. We can certainly hold this over to the next meeting, find more information for you and other things. They've requested that this allocation be sent back to them by Friday, August 30. We do have a meeting, a meeting on Tuesday prior to that, so I can certainly get more information for you and put more of your interest in...
What's the pleasure of the council here?
I, I don't want to hold it up. I mean, I guess we don't have anything between now and the 30th we're going to be able to use the money for, unfortunately. But, I would, I would sincerely like to, to look at next year, how we can work with getting this money out in the public. I mean, I don't have an answer right now today, but it just seems that, you know, affordable housing has always been, ever since I ran for the seat, an issue here in the county and just seemed kind of, kind of bad that we got to turn this money back in 100...
Well, I, Mr. Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not giving it back for other parts of the state to use, we're simply giving it back to the state to administer on behalf of Talbot County. So, I still think it's available for Talbot County projects if there are some...
Do we know that for certain then? If that's the case?
I don't know. Mr. Hollis has more experience.
Well, if that's the case, let's find out. That makes me feel better.
But, the dollar value on what they're showing us that we use, like 400,000 or 300,000, pales in comparison to what we're returning.
Right.
So, in other words, if we are getting some benefit, we're only utilizing one-fifth of the money that we could be utilizing, right?